Welcome to the Select Board meeting for Monday, January 30th. We'll call to order at 6:38 PM. I just wanted to start tonight by thanking all of our public safety and public work staff for all the work last week between the two storms. All the outages with the power and trees and various things that happened. Especially the Highway Department for, you know, the long hours clearing the roads, trying to keep it as safe as possible out there and close roads where needed to ensure, you know, everyone was as safe as possible. And Fire, who was coordinating a lot of that and assisting any residents who, you know, were kind of bound by, by the down trees and closed roads and power outages and such throughout those, those days. During that, we also, you know, had a situation where we had no coverage with the radios down in the center of town, which is not something new in general. Obviously, we have the new radio system and we expect that that shouldn't be a problem, but it still is. And I'll be working with the chiefs and the sergeant to explore what are the next steps that we need to do and what action do we need to take to really push that issue? Because it was a, you know, it could have been a really bad situation, a close call where someone was stranded and couldn't get any assistance. So, because of the storm. So fortunately, everyone's okay. There was no property damage or anything, but we don't want to continue to accept that that is just the way it is. We need to find a solution. So. So I'm going to work with them. We're going to try to meet this week and start drilling into the details and then we'll probably be coming back if there's support needed either from the town or, you know, to drive that point or whatever that looks like. So. So I'll put that out there. I know, I know there was some, some discussion about it because it was, it was a scary couple of days and events and things. So we don't take that lightly and want to make sure we don't have that again. But thank you again for everyone's work. First topic tonight, discussion regarding the recycling center proposal and capital request. There are no updates at this time. So unless there's any questions that we have to pass on, we're going to pass over that one.
Okay.
Okay. Review of the request for qualifications for the Town Hall feasibility study.
Can you have over that? Can you talk about it under the master project list?
Sure. I'm going to jump down to review of the Police Department policy for dot three two Criminal Justice Information System Policy first read. Chief's here. So if there was questions, I know it's just a first read. He can join us. If we don't have anything yet, then we can talk about it in the future unless there's stuff that you wanted to point out to us, Chief.
No, sir. Just want, I'm prepared if you have any questions.
Thank you.
I have none at this time.
I would just question, is this policy just a renewal of, of the past policy or has, is there any changes to it?
Selectman Ben Barry, I did, I did attach. I don't know if you have both copies. But we do have an existing policy on file.
Yeah.
Excuse me. But the policy is well outdated. As you can see, it was back in August 9th of 2004. And so the policy that I have submitted this time around is basically just the recommendations from the Criminal Justice Department themselves. It's a blanket policy. So yes, we did have a policy on file, but it's, it's very outdated.
Okay. Thank you.
And this all came about because of an audit that we had.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, that for a second read next time. Review of the proposed Personnel Bylaw draft, fourth read. Given we ended up having our meeting last week and there's a lot of things going on, I decided to just bring one of the two documents. I know that they are correlated, but if it could be easier to try to focus on one, see if we could make a little, you know, continued progress given all the other items on our agenda. So it's just typographical, but Section 1B2 is just blank. Is that just a edit that we dropped some? We didn't drop the numbering? I feel like we might have had a conversation about deleting something there. That's probably just all it is.
Yeah, it was a redundancy.
From something further down or a different section?
I'm trying to think. I don't have it in my notes.
Not a big.
That's coming from the, you know, does the track changes? When it converts over to the PDF, sometimes the numbering and the formatting.
Just stay, okay.
So you had stricken a line there because it seemed redundant further in the bylaw? And it's just carrying the number two because of the formatting?
Okay.
The other changes, the additions are in red font.
In three definitions, G and H or, yeah, G and H. I remember the discussion about, oh, okay. So regular is meant to be over 20 hour, 20 hours or more and not regular is meant to be less than 20?
Right. And if you think there's a clearer way to write that.
No, but it would probably cause somebody like me to ask what the definition of regular was. But no, it's fine.
We're trying to distinguish for our purposes under chapter 32B. 20 hours plus regularly scheduled is a benefited position and less than 20 regularly scheduled is non-benefited. So.
Seems like those two words make more sense to me, but.
We could do that.
I'm not saying we should change it, but to me it's like full time. It's benefited part time and non-benefited part time, but I'm not partial. I just, regular doesn't mean anything to me, except I know what it means here.
Okay.
So. I'm not partial either way. I just, for clarity, if you guys are good with it, change it. If not, no worries.
Yeah. So you're saying just do all three of them. Full-time employee benefited, part-time employee benefited, part-time employee not benefited, and then the definition describes why it's not benefited.
Right, right.
Under 20.
Or what makes it not benefited, so under 20, yeah.
Sure.
We also added in seasonal. Because in the personnel manual, there's references to seasonal, but we didn't have a matching definition.
Jumping down to Personnel Board, Section 4. I know we had talked about in the absence, the Select Board shall serve as the Personnel Board. But it doesn't talk about staggered. So, you know. Well, I'm just saying if.
Oh, in the event that it's not the Select Board.
In the event that it's not the Select Board, but it doesn't have a, so there's still one member. It doesn't have a quorum. Could two of us, you know, be on the Personnel Board or, you know, whatever combination to get it, to get you to the three. So we can not just take over the whole board, but just backfill as needed. I could do. Yeah, probably in the second paragraph, right? The members are appointed each to a staggered term. Staggered, I don't know. Is it three year?
Well, no, but I'm.
Oh, it does say will be staggered.
No, yeah, they're staggered for the, the number of years. What I'm saying is we have, you know, three staggered years with three members and that's fine. Two of them decide to quit. They don't want to be on the Personnel Board anymore. And we're down to one. That Personnel Board cannot function. What this reads as, that last line, it says, in the absence, the Select Board shall serve as the Personnel Board. It doesn't designate whether or not we would have to kick off that last member and just take over the three of us or would just two of us step in or would just one of us to bring it to a quorum? It doesn't give a process for how that role is filled by the Select Board in the, in the case of remaining members. You know, especially on a, on a personnel. Even if you only had two members, it can be difficult to engage in a, you know, a conversation about that.
It could almost go the other way though. If you had one member, do you really want two board members? Because then it carries the weight as though it was the board in theory, right? If you're, if you're aligned, almost would seem to.
Post as a joint meeting at minimum.
Want to serve it as a, you know, if there is at least, the, the Select Board member can only fill one open seat if there are any members.
Right. So then you'd have to capture that if they're, if it would constitute a quorum, then it would have to replace the Personnel Board and not just.
Correct. This is something about in absence of a a quorum on the Personnel Board, even with one Select Board member appointed to it, then the Board would serve or something.
Yeah.
But I guess that's a decision if we really would have a problem with two. Right. Just bring up the point that that's a.
Right. It just, you know, it wasn't, it was ambiguous. So I wanted to make sure it was clear. Since it would have to go all the way back to an annual town meeting to, to change one line. So.
I do at least think it should be, you know, any open seats if there's still remaining members, the, you know.
That they stay.
They would stay and seats would be filled by.
So then the process would just be about ensuring that it's, you know, duly posted and acknowledging the fact that it's a quorum of the Select Board fulfilling that role. Even if there's just some language in there that talks about that and not just taking over that role, but filling in.
Right.
Okay.
Maybe in absence of a quorum, the Select Board can fill, you know.
Any or all.
Any or all, yeah. Any or all open seats, right?
Yep.
And, and therefore serve as.
There you go. Something like that.
In lieu of, right? In lieu of a, having one or having enough for one? That's a good point.
Oh, I didn't put a note on it. I'm trying to find it. I know there was one other thing.
On the Personnel Board sections?
No, no. I was trying to be good about putting notes on the side of it and I I did not.
Five, Section 5E echo. Personnel Director, try to carry over or am I just missing the other reference? Is that supposed to be the Personnel Administrator from our definition?
Yeah, I think that's a carryover.
Well, then you have, even in Section 6, it's called Personnel Director.
So where do you want it to be and I'll make it consistent?
I think we already have it defined as Personnel Administrator, correct? No.
It's definition C or A or B, one of the first few, I think, if that's the reference.
It's A Personnel Administrator.
Okay. So we'll make it consistent all the way through?
Yeah.
Okay. And that's the only place that it's not. Everywhere else, I bet you it's Personnel Director.
Under E, shouldn't it just be the Personnel Board as opposed to Director or any title?
So under 5E.
Under second, in the Section 5E, so as Personnel Director, shouldn't it just be Personnel Board? With no defined.
It's the Board recommending to the Personnel Administrator Director. So it would be the Board recommending it to, in this case, Town Administrator Brian Smith.
The Personnel Board.
So the Board, the, the Board in E is the Personnel Board. It's not the Select Board. Maybe that.
Necessarily. It could be though.
But by.
By definition.
By definition, it's the Personnel Board, whether the Select Board is acting as or not. Right? Is that ambiguous which Board? Because there's references to both throughout here.
Go back to definitions. I think we clarified if you just see the word Board, what it was referencing. Let me double check.
I don't see it.
So Section 3, Sub B, the Board is appointed by the Select Board to advise the Select Board to manage a policy concerning personnel. So anywhere you're just seeing Boards standalone, it's referring to the Personnel Board. But if you think that's confusing, we can go back and be intentional and put Personnel Board versus Select Board in every, every space.
I don't have a preference as long as in the definition B, we put a second line that just says, you know, hereafter, the Board in quotes refers to the Personnel Board.
Right.
Not, and any reference to other Boards, i.e. the Select Board, will be written, you know, out in full. Something just to indicate that. Sound like a lawyer in a legal document now.
I can make that change.
So per 3A, the Personnel Administrator is the TA or our designee, the Board, Select Board's designee. But then the Powers of section refers to the Town Administrator in every subline rather than the Personnel Administrator. So for consistency, I think we should with the powers and duties, Section 6 says they shall serve as, and that's not what the definition says. So I guess I just go back to the definition. Are we saying it shall or we can designate someone else first? To be the Personnel Administrator.
I think it's anticipating if staffing was to change in the future, that you could appoint somebody else. But by default, it falls to my position. But I think the, the authority to appoint that should always stay with the three of you.
Then Section 6 should be the TA. Then Section 6 should be the TA shall serve unless someone else, the Board designated somebody else, or, you know, something like that. And then the powers and duties should all reference the Personnel Administrator, rather than the Town Administrator, just in case it's not.
Got it, I'll make that fix.
Did you find that other section?
No.
Or not yet, no?
No.
Okay.
I, you know, I did a bunch of notes, it might have been actually on a different subject.
Okay. Bill, was there anything else in the bylaw that you wanted to discuss?
No. I am fine with the Personnel Policy and Procedure.
Do you want to bring it back for one final vote? We'll.
Yeah, I figure we'll bring it back at least once more, either when we're ready to finalize both, because at the very least, if not, you know, one more time. So if either of you come up, you know, as we're going through the policy, along with the bylaw, if there's something else you want to review, just let Brian know, we'll put it back on.
Okay.
Before, and if not, we'll bring it back when we are ready to approve both.
Okay.
And bring them out to the voters.
Things that were presented and read from your last revisions, I can finalize those.
Yep.
I'll make the additional changes that you all discussed tonight.
Please.
And you're not looking to bring it back for the next meeting, we'll hold it for a future final review?
Yes, unless someone has something they want to discuss, but we'll let you know if that happens before the final review.
No, I think the only time it'll change is if we, reviewing the manual, if we find out that there are things that should have shifted over that didn't yet, or.
Yeah, yeah, makes sense.
Okay.
And you can send us the revised, you know, final draft, just we'll have it.
Right.
To look from. With that, it is 7:00 PM, so I will call the joint meeting with the Finance Committee and the Capital Planning Committee to order. Come on up. Brian, I'm fine with that plan, if that's what you want to do.
Work, she, do you want to do it now?
Oh, did I miss that?
She walked in, she's in the back row, like literally seconds ago.
Thank you, I missed it. So we're going to start in just a couple minutes, but I'm glad you joined us up here, and we're going to cover one other piece of business first. So we'll just need a moment to reset up here, and then we'll we'll jump into that before we get underway on the joint meeting. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Did you guys get the updated copy?
Updated what?
The updated copy. We'll send it to you after, if you don't have it.
Yes.
Just slightly, you have it?
With a slight change?
Yeah.
I didn't, I don't think I did.
It would have come out today. No? Okay, I'll make sure you guys get it after.
I got the one that was in the packet, that's.
No, there's one since then.
Okay.
It's not materially different, but, so you have the final.
Thank you.
Good sir? Okay. So, before we dive into the joint business, we're going to cover one other item, which is a letter of recognition for Officer Laura Gordon, that Chief Hulse is going to present. Coming up, sir.
Laura, if you want to join me. I was told ahead of time by Bill, her husband, who is here in attendance, that Laura does not like surprises. I think she kind of knew something maybe was going on, because we tried to do this five or six times. So I thank you, Board, for allowing me to come up here and to have Laura here tonight. I do have a letter of recognition that I'd like to present to you. But before I read the letter, I just want to say, you truly have been amazing addition to our team. I can't thank you enough. And, and once I'm done with this, I do have a copy for Laura, and Brian, I have a copy for you for the Personnel Board. Dear Board, as you are aware, community policing and community outreach has been a focus of mine since joining the Police Department in 2011. In our recent hire advertisements and hiring process, we have stressed the importance of our office having a community-focused mindset. Not that long ago, in July of 2022, we hired Officer Laura Gordon. I believe we all knew at the time that Officer Laura Gordon brought a tremendous amount of experience that included a desire to serve the community in many positive ways. Since joining our team, Officer Gordon has gone above and beyond every way and has exceeded all my expectations. From the moment she began with our department, she has made a huge impact in our community. I am constantly being told by the community members, surrounding departments, and her fellow Irving officers of what a great work, of what great work that Officer Gordon has continued to do, has done and has continued to do. I am reminded often of how wonderful an addition she has been, and how much she is appreciated by our community. And I just want to pause there for a moment, just to say, it wasn't long ago that Officer Gordon and I was at the Community Center, and somebody didn't realize that I was there, and they told Laura that she would make a great chief. I was fired. And that is a true story. And knock this over. Policing in 2020 is much different from when Officer Gordon began in the early 90s. And it is obvious she has been a leader in adapting, a leader in adopting and adapting with the progressive changes over the three decades. Our community bond and partnership with this town is strong because of officers like Laura Gordon. Members of this department are very fortunate to work for and receive the unwavering support of this community. This type of support only is created and maintained through constant community involvement and outreach. I would like to recognize and say thank you to Officer Gordon for the work that she has done, is doing, and will continue to do for our community. The following examples are just some of the things that Officer Gordon is doing, or is working on doing for us all. Assisted with the reestablishment of the K-9 program, and adding the comfort dog aspect to the program. Established the Coffees with Cops program with the Senior and Community Center and Public Library. Working on establishing the Sand for Seniors program, and coordinating with local departments on that effort. Coordinating a scam alert presentation for the residents with the Northwest District Attorney's Office, and she is working to bring that program for a second round. She provides information on a regular basis regarding the Police Department on the Around Town newsletter to keep the community informed. Represented the department at the presentation of the 9/11 World Trade Center American flag during the visit to the Franklin County. Makes regular appearances at the Public Library, including the Summer Reading Party. Establish a relationship and continued rapport with the Quabin House in Orange through routine visits, including attending their annual spaghetti supper. And I can say, joining this program has been a tremendous, I think we received so much out of it, more than they do, it's just amazing. And I didn't even know this program existed until Laura came here to Irving. She serves on the Advisory Board for the CSO Clubhouse Program, and I may have that wording wrong, but I do know she holds a special and a high position. And what the Clubhouse does is it oversees the Quabin House and the Green River House in Greenfield. And she serves on that Board, and I had the pleasure of joining her at one of the meetings recently. She represented the department at the Ragshag Parade. She's maintained and renewed presence at the Irving Elementary School with K-9 Officer Ziva. She organized community outreach through social media with the introduction of Officer Farley Ledger, which had been followed by over 300 community members. I couldn't stop hearing about how great it was. An elf. She helped reestablish the Bike Patrol Unit. It was her, it was her coming to us and just presenting that this is an option that we should look into. Looking to provide training for officers in the area through her connections with the local K-9 trainers that she has developed since running with Ziva. And this list is constantly growing. She keeps me so busy with, I want to do this, I want to do that. She's looking at doing a Home Alone program for young teenagers, so that they feel comfortable at home alone, and what to do. She wants to do a bike rodeo. And Officer Gordon's efforts, I think, are spilling out in our department. I see other officers that are showing initiative and wanting to be part of what it is that she's creating here. And like I said, that was just a list of some of the things that she's done. It's not, we'd be here all night. Trust me. She'll see me tomorrow morning and say, hey, I got another idea. But in closing, I would like to say thank you, Officer Laura Gordon. You have been an example for us all. Her efforts do not go unrecognized. Officer Gordon, you are appreciated, valued for what you have brought and continue to bring to the Irving Police Department, and I am very grateful. I've asked you to come here, so I could read this letter.
He was really making room for the new chief to speak next. No, no, no.
Thank you. It's, it's an honor to be here and be welcomed into this community and be able to continue doing what I love to do. There was a time last year that I thought that was coming to an end. So, by you guys embracing me coming into the community, and the chief, and the rest of the department, and allowing me to continue with these programs, it means a lot. Thank you.
And I will just add to, just real quick, as I pointed out, her official resignation takes effect on the 20th, it already did, right?
On Friday, the 27th, I officially resigned from Greenfield PD.
So we're stuck.
Well, try not to celebrate that, because that's a long time and journey that you had there, and I'm sure that's bittersweet, but we can't help but be happy about that.
Thank you.
And that you are happy here, we are beyond happy to have you, and love to have you excited to be with us for as many years as you'd like, from here. Anyone else would like to say something, please, but thank you. And thank you, Chief, for bringing that.
Okay, so now that we're all together to do the joint topics, I think the first one that I'd like to.
Cover is the Water Department discussion around the project for the Distribution System Lead Assessment and the potential SRF forgiveness loan opportunity. Superintendent Sanders, if you would join us, because it is a topic on the STM, so, draft, so I want to make sure we kind of get through some of the supporting stuff. And so, I think various groups have different levels of information at the table right now, so I will, really high level, and then I will leave it to you to add anything I missed. And then, for any questions, or for you to start with some of the questions that we had out there and answering those. So the DEP, EPA, and then DEP, I believe, have adjusted some of their guidelines slash requirements, and part of it is to do a lead assessment of all water piping, including all the way to the house connection to the houses. And that's a requirement of every city and town in the state of Massachusetts. As part of that, there's a timeline to have it complete, which is very short. And there is a funding opportunity where we would have to take a loan through the SRF, which is a favorable rate loan program. However, the funding opportunity says that if you complete all of the steps and the assessment, and provide that report within the timelines required, that they will forgive it in full. So it, in effect, becomes free, or becomes a grant, there's probably some carrying cost in between, but in the long term, it's, the bulk of it is not paid by the town. That's the real short version, and I know one of the open questions out of that, and we can, you know, if there's questions about what it is, before we get into that, that's fine. But one of the open questions was, do has the funding ran out, and if we apply and get it, then are we guaranteed the funding? If we meet the criteria required of timeline and work product? And the other question was, if all 351 cities and towns in the state are doing this all at the same time, is there even bandwidth, is it achievable, all of those kinds of questions, and what are other towns doing? Because in big cities, that's a lot of work. And how is this even feasible to be done statewide in that short timeline? So I think those are kind of the few questions that I know are already outstanding, but before we dive into any answers, because I know you have some, was there any other questions about what it is, what it's about? Ask him why we have to do it, not me? No? Okay.
I have a question on process within the.
Okay.
From the various tasks that Tianbon put together the proposal for the two or three tasks, I don't remember how many now. But under Task 1.2, the field investigations, they put basement inspections, and my question is, what happens if the resident says no? So they've been earmarked through the desktop surveys in Task 1, 1.1, I think it is, and 1.2, they're taking those desktop and models and maps, and then going to various designated homes, you know, and saying, we need to get into your basement to do this test. I'm just curious what happens if they say no, you're not going in, and would that jeopardize the reimbursement? If we have not satisfied? The analysis says, I need you to do these 12 locations, or 52 locations, or whatever it may be, and we got eight of them done, because that's all the residents would let us do. Does DEP say, well, then you're not, you didn't complete it, you can't get the reimbursement? I know I'm asking you to answer a hypothetical question, because you don't know the answer yet.
I would imagine it would probably fall under something like, when we go to replace a water meter, if the resident doesn't let you in, I mean, there's eventually some go-around steps that we'd have to take. The part of going in the house to check. The part of going in the house to check in for lead or whatever, it's basically at the meter. It's a simple thing. It's a scratch test of the pipe, see the color, et cetera. And they can figure it out from there. And then if we need to go further, if it's, if it's unknown, then that would probably, from my understanding, lead to doing a, another test, which could be done outside if it's the bore with a vacuum, with a vac truck.
Yeah. So I was going to ask you about that. 1.2.2, the physical inspection and the vacuum excavation. Is that done outside of the home?
Yes.
Okay. So that, that doesn't require entry, then? It's just the, the basement inspection, which is a scratch test to see if you have to go further? And, and I'm not assuming that anybody's going to say no. I mean, we're trying to do a test that we tell you if you have safe pipes in your house, so it makes sense to, to test it. I was just a what-if. I would hate to go in blind thinking that we are 100% guaranteed if we finish this. And there's a little check mark that says, "Oh, you didn't do everything you were supposed to."
I, I could ask around. I, I don't think it would disqualify us.
Okay.
Because we're doing our part to try to set up the program, the inventory. I mean, I mean, the bulk of this is to set up the inventory, come up with a replacement plan. Right now, from what I've been told, there's, there's no grants or funding to replace people's lead service lines. So that would hopefully come down the pipe later.
The thing I was going to add is I just, I had read that 121, you know, first two paragraphs. The first one says, "They'll only be conducted when they have permission and authorization from the homeowners." And the second one says, "They'll send a mailing, asking them to schedule, and send a second for those that don't respond." And I think that's where it ends. I don't actually think, like, if it had hypothetically 100% refusal, like, no, no response, then I think you've met the obligation. Because they don't have to do it unless it's been permitted, I think. It doesn't necessarily answer the forgiveness question 100%, but I think, I think we're okay. But I don't know.
Yeah. Because I was speaking to Tyon Bond, he's not going to just break into somebody's basement. But that doesn't say, that doesn't say that DEP is going to accept that answer as, "Sorry, you couldn't get it done."
No, we, we figure out a percentage based on how many residents or service connections we have. And I'm sure there's a formula for a percentage. And then, from that point, it becomes an ever-evolving inventory. So as we go, like, in a house to replace a water meter or replace a button, whatever, we'll physically take a look and do a scratch on the pipe, see what the color is, tell if it's copper. You know, so we're going to build this inventory, and we'll go from there. If there is anything that needs to be removed, then we have a plan developed to do that.
I don't want that unresolved question to be something that would say, "We don't do it." That's a, it was just a question that popped into my head that, yeah, I was curious about. That was the only note I had on.
So Pete, the only thing I think, at this point, that I would like to hear, and I think the residents would like to hear with this program, is, is a program, and you spoke a little bit about that, that you expect that down the road, something may come along to, to assist the residents who may have lead in replacing, and helping them replace that, or, or a grant to, to replace it. That as soon as you hear that, or, or you hear it going on, whatever community is doing it, that you keep us informed as to...
Absolutely.
To what that is. And I'd like to stay ahead of that.
Sure.
For our sake and for residents' sake.
Right.
It's very important.
Our, our system's fairly new, as far as water systems go. And I was informed from prior operators and whatnot, and talking to other people in the fields, that it's highly unlikely that we'll find any lead. I, I don't think we'll find any, to be honest with you.
And you think that would be both in our lines and the privately owned, or just the publicly?
I, I would say the privately owned. I know on our lines, there isn't. We have no documentation that there is. Everything's plastic or...
So the idea that we're going through the process just to prove the assumption that we don't have any anyways?
Yes.
Theoretically, a private side service line wouldn't be either, because we wouldn't have probably allowed it, right? Potentially, I mean, I don't know.
In theory.
In theory.
Right.
Hopefully, it's a lot of money to prove it's right, and we don't.
Well, all our current sites, when we do the lead and copper testing, we've always come up with no detection or it's well, well beyond, below the, the limit. So I don't think we'll find any.
If you do have documentation that says we don't have any, can we just submit that instead of having to do this?
They still want us to develop an inventory list.
Okay.
Because there could be, like, hopefully, you don't find any lead lines. There could be galvanized lines. And the other one would be, if you don't know what it is, then they would call it an unknown. Then if it's an unknown, you'll probably end up having to treat it like, as if it was a lead line.
And this is commercial and residential?
Our, our main line, yes. Us plus the residents, service lines from the curb stop to the house.
But it's also commercial lines, not just, like, commercial business lines? It's not just private residential, it's all connections, right?
Everything connected to our distribution system.
Questions?
I heard the word "private residence" mentioned. Is this only for the people connected to the municipal water supply?
Yes.
Okay.
At least so far. I said, "At least so far." Other questions on it? Okay. And the reason, not only because we had questions, but also because it's one of the STM draft articles to, we have to have an authorization to do the borrowing to then get reimbursed in a year and a half, if it takes.
Some, I'd like, you know, add to it. Some, some larger cities and communities, I mean, way bigger than Irving, they have, they are taking this on themselves to try to do it, but they have the ability to do the GIS mapping. They have a vac truck to do a vac core. We, we don't have any of that, so... That's probably another reason why we should do this.
I'd just like to comment that taxpayers who may be watching this, whenever they watch it, this is not one more thing that the town of Irving is coming up with, that we're just dreaming up ways to spend your money. While it's absolutely not a good thing to be drinking water through lead pipes, there's no question about that. This happens to be a program that the state tells us, "You're going to do this."
Correct.
So, so we could, we could say, "No, we're not going to fund it. We're not going to do it." But I don't think that's going to work out very well for us.
Right. EPA started, they reviewed, revised all the rules, passed down to DEP, and now it's ours.
Pete, what are they going to require? You talked about in one of the emails, that there is a chance that they're going to make the municipalities develop new sample sites for lead and copper testing, and that we're also going to have to go back to testing every six months, which apparently we're not doing right now?
Correct. Right now, we test every three years for lead and copper. Part of the program, if they make us shift our sites, which seems to be what they're going to do, then we'll have to test the new sites and go so long with no detects, hopefully, or, or very, very little. And then we can apply for a waiver again and go back to the, every three years.
Do you have any ballpark of what that cost could be?
Those costs are changing every day. I can try to find out for you.
Okay. And do you get to select the new sites, or is that something that's dictated?
I think through this program, it's going to be, it's based on the age of the house and locations in the system. Currently, right now, we use some old, I, I think there's some of the older houses in town. And they're, they're, they've been good sites, no detects. And if there's some of the older houses, that's why I believe, I don't think we'll find any.
Did they explain why they were going to make you change the sites?
Just to get a different point of the system.
Okay, okay.
Right now, currently, they're in various parts of the system, the low end, there's a few up in the middle. We do the school, you know. So it's, it's kind of spread out at different levels in the system. So you get a general idea of the system as a whole. So they'll, they'll probably have to shift them. They may not. But I was told you probably would. And if they do do that, we're no longer in a waiver. We'll have to go back to every so many months to test them until we get, you know, so many non-detects, and then we can apply for a waiver.
Okay.
Other questions? All right. The other, excuse me, relative to the STM warrant draft review, the other item was the water storage tank mixer project. And so there's a variety of articles on the draft STM that the capital planning committee had recommended, this being one of them, but not at this amount.
Correct. It's, I didn't catch it. Apparently, nobody, nobody caught it. I didn't catch it, so that's, that's me. This one proposal was written differently. They did it as the, the 26 was for the engineering costs, the services, the retaining the contractor and different quotes and whatnot. The zero to, or the $10,000 to $50,000 was dependent if we want a, a hard-wired system or a solar system. It's just the way this one was written, the first time I've done a proposal like that from Tyon Bond. So...
Does that change anything for the group? On the capital recommendation, I guess, first, maybe, to, to put it forward at all, or put it forward in this fiscal year?
A couple of questions. How much for the hard wire, and then if we have to go get solar panels, how, you know, this is kind of a broad, broad amount that you, you know, you're asking for here. So I'm just kind of curious.
They were going to give us, once this is approved or whatever, or the, we do this proposal, then we need to sub it out to the contractors or get the bids, whatever. We'll get two versions, whether it's hard wire or solar. And that would be for us to decide, the town to decide which way they want to go.
But we're going to put the money upfront? Because we're going to change this, right? We're going to change the 26 to...
76.
76 would be the high? Maybe, right.
So the, the responses, the engineers haven't been able to work on the design yet. So to give you your two opinions of probable cost, so that the town can make that decision, you need to engage the engineers to cer, to do a certain amount of work. We don't have any money appropriated at this time to engage them for that work. So it's, it's probably a Phase 1, Phase 2. So as, as decision makers, as the voters, you can ask them to appropriate all the funds you may need upfront, and then go through this Phase 1, Phase 2. Or you could do Piece 1, which is engineering. And then they'll come back to you with your options. And then if you decide on an option, you could schedule a second town meeting to do a request for the appropriation in Phase 2.
But it kind of is the feast of purpose, because we've moved this from FY '24 to FY '23.
I agree. The, you're trying to do this in an expeditious manner, because you, you want to get ahead of the, the warmer season when we were getting the, the hits.
Right.
Right. But we, unfortunately, Tyon Bond can't give you a more specific answer until we've engaged them for services.
So the $50,000 difference, do we have that in retained earnings?
You do. You do.
So... What do we do?
Whatever doesn't get used from 10 to 50, we'll go back, in theory. But, let me ask you this. I, I was looking at the schedule. It says it'll take them six weeks from the notice to proceed to have the 30B contract ready for submission. So does that mean at that point, we'll have two designs, or a couple of designs, and have chosen? If we give them the proceed, in theory? So... Do we have enough time between the special and the annual? If we fund the 26 and the special, could we then fund the actual, you know, this is the engineering. Could we then fund the actual equipment, if you will, in the annual, even if it's an article for the current fiscal year? Because we can do a current fiscal year in the annual, and that's still May. We still are two months sooner-ish. And we may have a better number. Maybe it's 29, and it's not 50. Or it's 11. Or it's nine. I'm wishing. I, I mean, that might work, timing. We might just have enough time. We could also put it in the ATM as $50,000 for the current fiscal year, and then amend it on the Florida what the number really is. If we don't know by the time we need to print the warrant.
I think I'd be more favorable for that, to split it, just because I, I'm always the negative one, but I, I question, is 50 really enough right now? With the way costs are driving upwards and stuff, that, especially when you start talking, if we potentially go with solar, which I think might be a really good plan, but then I question if 50 would be enough. So I would be in favor of splitting it and doing the 26, as we originally talked about. And then let's see what the actual numbers come in.
And I, I'm not a big solar guy, but I was talking to the engineers about the solar part of it. And actually, that, I don't know how, but they said that possibly would be cheaper, because you're not hard, doing all the hard wiring up the tank. Everything pretty much is up top, except for the control switch down below. I, I'm, like I said, I'm not a big solar guy, but they think the solar may be actually cheaper. And with the cost of electricity, who knows? It's something to think about.
Right now.
Cost of spinning?
We can run it various ways. We can run it in hand. We can put on a timer.
What I'm saying is, you put solar, it doesn't work at night.
Correct. It doesn't have to run 24/7.
Okay.
It's just to keep the tank from getting any stagnant areas with the heat. And that's where we're getting the bacterial hits. And if we keep getting them, I wouldn't want to have to chlorinate all the time.
Pete, one question for them is, what is the backup to the solar? Are they going to suggest batteries? Battery storage? Are they going to suggest hardwired for electricity or a generator? Like, what happens if that solar goes down? What is our backup mechanism?
I'll try to find out.
Okay.
So it doesn't need to run all the time?
No, it doesn't.
So are we talking like something that needs to run once a week?
Or once a day. I mean, when you, when you get into the warmer weather, you'd probably want to mix it up more, so you don't get, get any stagnant areas in the tank, so we don't get the hits.
So theoretically, when we have more sun, it needs to run more, and we don't have more sun, it doesn't need to run as much? That's kind of what you're saying?
That was pretty fast. You want to repeat that? Sorry.
Yes. The more sun we have, the more we want it to turn. And the less sun we have, the less we need it to turn, in theory.
Right. Even if we ran it for like an hour a day, or it's an hour every other day. We know when we take the samples there at the tank, so you definitely mix it up, you know, a few days before that. So, so it's mixed. I know in the winter now, I mean, in the winter, you probably would run it less, because it's so cold now. It's, it's very hard for bacteria to live up there. I mean, your water coming out of tap now is cold.
I think Charlie can confirm this probably better than I can. But if you're going to have any solar and it's not grid attached, then it's going to have to have battery, or it's not going to be able to run anything, right? Most likely. So there'll be some kind of storage.
To be any, any bit reliable.
There'll be some storage.
You could have some bad storm in the summer, and it, you wouldn't have solar production for a week.
Right. If that's something, think about electrical backup, basically. Now, we can bring that forward to the engineers.
Okay. So it sounded like...
The 26.
The capital recommendation is to continue with the 26, but plan a supplementary article in the ATM for the actual? Any other questions on that one? Excuse me. I think that was the questions for you, Pete, but there are other STM articles on there. So we'll get into the full STM dra, warrant draft review. And just see if there's any questions around yours additionally before... just see if there's any questions around yours additionally before we move on. So the STM warrant draft has uh, num- article five and article six, which are the two, and article seven, which are the three water wastewater-related ones. And the one that we did not just discuss of the three is article five, appropriation for wastewater capital improvement for the, uh, replace and upgrade the pump station monitoring equipment. And that's for the Arch Street Station and the River Street Station?
Yes.
Any questions anybody has on those? And that was ten thousand. Source from Water, Wastewater Enterprise Fund, and then six and seven was, six is the water capitalization, sorry, the Water Enterprise Fund for the mixer. So we're gonna move that back to twenty-six in our draft here. And that will be for the engineering of it, not the entire project. And then seven would be the borrowing for the lead service line inventory and replacement project. The hundred and twenty-five is slightly more than the estimate, which gives us some room for interest or carrying costs. Does it cover any costs the town has in addition to what the engineering firm's gonna take care of? Does it? No, does it? Does it encompass any costs the town's gonna burn, bear on top of what the engineering firm's doing?
I think.
Is there any?
I believe that's for everything.
I need to double check with them, so with our last project, which is where you're probably thinking of our experience, where we're going out to short-term notes, and having to carry some interest. This is coming through DEP's SRF fund, my belief is they don't start, my understanding is they don't start until we've closed the project, but I will verify that for you.
So it's interest-free in the interim?
Because it's being supported by the SRF, it's a subsidized interest rate to begin with. My understanding is they don't, they don't start it until you have a finalized project, final borrowing amount, and they've sort of locked in the principal with your repayment schedule. But if you're curious about what happens in intervening, intervening months, in terms of carrying interest, I will double check on that. It's not the same as the private market where we were.
No, no, I know.
Yeah.
I'm only getting my loans from there.
I will, I will find out.
No, that's fine. I also just meant, is there any, and I bring this up because lately I've realized, personally, a lot of the large projects that we've done have taken a significant amount of town resources to support them, and in some cases, a lot of overtime, because they've been projects that have run outside of normal hours, that are planned projects. And, you know, tens of thousands of dollars of costs that wasn't incorporated into the total cost of the plan, that comes out of operating budget. It isn't incorporated in there, and it's probably a bigger discussion if we had some, but I don't think that makes sense. Because we didn't, we, we don't plan to have that work as part of our operating costs. So to me, it should, we should have that capacity within this project. So my question was more around, is there a bunch of additional staff time or resources required from the town beyond what we're paying the engineers to do?
Right.
That will be required to complete this? I don't think so, but I wanted to ask, that's, that's the question I was asking. Is that your take? That it won't have a lot of resources needed from the town?
No, I mean, a lot of it, um, there's in-kind services that we're doing for, for some of that, and then, I, I imagine the rest is all covered. I mean, as far as like the overtime, I, I know what you were talking about. I, I just have to not do the OT.
Well, yeah, I mean, Arch Street, I know you know I'm talking about Arch Street.
Oh, yeah.
Being out in Route Two for many hours and long days, that, that's a lot of overtime costs, and having multiple projects running long days, but I just, it's, it's just something that I think we need to incorporate in our discussions about capital projects. What's the total cost? How much is it impacting our daily operations, and if it is, does that cause us to have, to backfill that? You know, and that ends up being overtime, or whatever that ends up being, so. Anyway, I won't belabor it, sounds like one twenty-five is good.
Yeah.
I think we're good with you for now, sir. Unless you had something else for us, or did I miss something?
No, I believe everything's good.
Okay, you look like you had more, I mean, you can stay.
No. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. I'm going back from the top on the STM. We're planning to have it here, we were looking at late February, we'll come back to the final date once we see where we are in the review. First article is a bill of the prior year for wastewater. I guess there were more. And the amount of one thousand five hundred eighty-three dollars and eighty-seven cents for environmental resource associates. Stop me, ask questions if you have them, I'm just gonna go one by one. Article two is amending the FY twenty-three general operating budget. And that is to adjust line four, health and human services, for the Board of Health operating expenses, now that we have taken on the employee as a direct employee for the Board of Health, uh, for the Eastern Franklin Health District. There we go, got it. We'll look at that number as tentative, because we don't have the exact final number yet, and we cannot, which gets me, we can't, uh, take in the receipts for.
Yes. Let me explain.
For the cost shared portions that we build to the other two towns, and use it to fund this fiscal year.
This fiscal year.
In the future years, we will be able to, but not this fiscal year, and please, yes, please explain further, because I don't like it.
So, once the tax rate's been set, based on all of your ability to levy, which includes your local receipts, it's locked. And so we can't, even if we have an influx of additional revenue, we can't also tap into that for this year, because the tax rate has been set. So money will come in, it will go into the general fund, it will become part of free cash in next year's certification. And to the chairman's point, when we start budgeting for FY twenty-four, we will increase local receipts in our, in our estimations, and we will use that to determine what you're allowed to raise and appropriate for FY twenty-four. So it's just this six-month period where we can't do that. So this article sources the change from free cash to make the adjustment this one time. We will be receiving the receipts.
In six months, it'll be replenished.
And it will be replenished, yes, yep.
Or ten months when it's certified.
Correct.
Even if the exact dollar amount was exact, and there was no change to the overall tax rate, you can't do it?
Correct.
Okay. We expect to have that number by when?
They had to cancel their meeting last week because of the weather. They are rescheduled for this Wednesday.
Wednesday at two.
Okay. So that would be, we'd hope to have the, the best guess, accurate number by then?
Correct.
To put in the STM?
Yep.
Okay. Questions on that one? Article three, amend the FY twenty-three Irving Elementary School funding. It's an adjustment to line two of the funding, the Irving Elementary School expense, for an increase of three hundred and eight thousand five hundred dollars for out-of-school placements, or out-of-district placements, I'm sorry, and the associated costs that were not part of the planned budget.
Brian, do, do we know if this is for one placement or multiple placements?
It's my understanding it's for multiple placements.
The only question I had, and there's nobody here that I can ask, is, I was at their last budget, or last meeting where they discussed budget, and they shared the FY twenty-three, they do a monthly expenditure report, where they're at, and collectively, they encumber early on all salaries that they know, and everything that's anticipated, so it's encumbered, but they also have a budget balance on various line items. And historically, they turn back money at the end of the year, and I was just wondering, just based on about five or six line item, line items where they've encumbered, and they know what their anticipated cost, they're just shy of two hundred thousand dollars in anticipated additional funds remaining, budget balance. So I'm wondering if we need to fund the entire three oh eight now, or establish that line item that's already there, and fund a portion of it, see where they're at, when it gets closer to free cash, if we're already gonna be doing additional funding, if we're gonna do another annual, or special in May or so, if we know what that amount is gonna be closer. I know it's, it's a shell game, you're gonna, if they have extra, it's gonna be returned to free cash anyways, but if we don't need to take it out of free cash, we could use it for another project that's coming up, because they find out that they have it in free cash, or unexpended funds at the end of the year, but still needed a hundred, or a hundred and twenty-five, or a hundred and fifty even, whatever they needed, you know. Just wondering if we need to front-load the entire three oh eight at this point. I don't have anybody to ask that question.
When is our budget meeting with them again? Is it next week?
You meet with them on the thirteen.
Yeah.
And we need how many days to post the meeting?
I need it, fourteen is legally the shortest, but I need time to get it signed, posted, and out to the residents.
So I just think we could wait and discuss it with them, because I like that idea. But I don't know if we could, had enough time to discuss it with them at the meeting, and then?
You can always form an.
We also haven't set the date, we could
Yeah, we haven't set the date.
maybe do March sixth, which means that would be three weeks after our next meeting, and if we finalize it in our next meeting, get it out later that week, and we're good, if it was a Monday. Maybe, I don't know what March sixth is, I'm just throwing it out there, we can come back to that and decide that.
Yeah, and, and again, the cost is there, the, the placement's happened, it's gonna get funded, the bill's gonna get paid, you know, the transportation's gonna happen, it's just a matter of where that mechanism, where that funding is coming from. Are we gonna tie it up out of free cash at this special town meeting, or send, send some of it, and see where the budget ends up, and see where, you know, at the end of the fiscal year, and then fund the, the balance, as we know, all, once they've started encumbering all of their costs, and they understand where they're, they'll start rolling all those encumbrances in, you know, April, and you'll know.
I mean, we could potentially even carry an ATM article, and know by the ATM, and just
Yeah.
change the amount on the floor.
And just change it right there.
Just like we're talking about with the, with the mixer, right?
Yeah.
Or we could have it June thirty, and the reason I like that, at least just to add, is if we encumber three hundred and eight to the budget now, or I mean, you know, approve it, it's free cash that's just locked up until next October, say.
That's what I'm saying.
If we do, I don't know, a hundred and twenty-five now, or something, right?
Correct.
A hundred and fifty, and say, let's start there.
Yeah.
And then, don't do anything else, we do have a, you know, a June thirty for other things, that money's available.
Right, that's what I was thinking.
If it's, if it's in the account, it's not available now, even if they don't use it.
That's where my mind was, and their budget might be able to absorb that extra, you know.
It's a few hundred usually every year, give or take, so.
And if not, then we have the annual to put on for current fiscal year, and, and fund the balance.
Or we can just do June thirty, I mean, we've done them before.
Yeah, whatever.
We used to have a standing one practically, and we haven't done them hardly ever lately, we've done a lot less STMs in recent years, which just says, we've budgeted better, I think, and had less unexpected things we couldn't manage, but.
Scott, just with your experience with the school, is that three oh eight inclusive of all, like, is that tuition to another establishment?
It's tuition, it's transportation, that's, that's all, all costs associated, so, and, you know, tuition is expensive in and of itself, but we're having conversation, or I, the school committee is having conversations specifically about transportation. The transportation costs alone for, I think there was two out-of-district placements, was just shy of two hundred thousand dollars a year.
That's a vehicle.
Those are the conversations, those are the conversations we're having about, you know, looking internally.
That's an accessible vehicle, and then some.
At the last school committee meeting, that was one of the conversations of, is this something that, instead of going with contracted services outside, is it something where we could buy, I think, even two minivans, you know, if there's two children, so you're not, because programs are not always aligned side by side, you don't want to stick two children in there and be like, all right, you're gonna be an extra hour and a half, because we have to go the wrong, the long way, so you would, you know, you want the direct route, but,
Sure.
two vans and two drivers is a far cry of, shorter than a hundred and eighty, or a hundred and ninety thousand dollars a year.
Well, and this is the initial year, right? Being that it's a new budget add, I'm assuming there are more years to come that we're going to be.
So as long as they, this, these students, or a student, or whoever it is, uh, is residing in town, and is, you know, part of the Irving School District, until age twenty-one, I believe.
Okay.
So it's a long term, so you're looking at, you know, a hundred and eighty thousand this year, but everything goes up.
Yeah.
And you could average two hundred thousand, if you're talking elementary school child now, it could be ten more years? I mean, that's two million dollars over a ten-year period. Couple of vans and some drivers is a heck of a lot cheaper than two million.
Absolutely.
I'll drive for a million.
I'm gonna undercut you on that one, I'm gonna drive for a hundred thousand.
I meant for ten years.
Oh, okay, all right, all right, fair enough. So.
We joke, but yeah, I mean, no matter where they are, they're in elementary, so there's at least through, whatever, right? Potentially, so.
So back to the original question, the three oh eight is all-encompassing for, for everything, and there's, there's also, I would imagine, it's even line items, because there's, um, there's out-of-district meeting, meetings, you know, and follow-ups, and, you know, so I'm sure there's other costs that can be attributed back to that line item, and not just straight tuition and transportation.
Yeah, okay.
So.
Thank you.
It is definitely expensive.
Yes.
Could I just ask whether it's Scott, his liaison, or, or Brian, or whoever it is that discusses this with the school? If you, just, my thought is, please make sure they, they understand, we're honoring our commitment to them, that we understand their unforeseen things, if they come to us later in the budget process, and they need more money like they need now, we're certainly gonna fund it, it's just, can we fund it with some of the money they have left over? We're not trying to back out of anything, we told them we do. I don't want them to be reluctant to come here and, and give us a fairly low estimate of what they need, worried that we won't fund anything later. And this is one of those things you have to fund, so, so as long as that thought is conveyed to them, I, I'd like that.
Yeah, that's, that was my point, is that, you know, the three hundred and eight is the anticipated cost, and it's gonna get paid regardless. And so whether or not we can not lock up the reserve funds for all that time, or, and ultimately, if it comes back where we have to use the entire reserve fund amount for this year, then we do, and maybe we do it in two installments instead of one. You know, I don't know what the outcome will be, but if we can leave that freed up to find out where it comes from, I'd be happy with that.
Is there any reason to bother to do any now, then? If we potentially are coming back to do more later anyway? Is there any need to do it now, and not in June thirty, or June, or May, if we are ready to then?
The only, I mean.
I mean, we're good for it. And we're not gonna not fund it, to your point, Dan, if the bottom line is the end of the budget, there's whatever number left, it's gotta get paid, it's gotta get paid.
This might be a silly question, but is the school, like, literally sitting on a bill right now? Like, they have paper bill in hand, saying this money is due now?
I don't know if it's monthly or quarterly, or how that invoices happen, but it's an active placement for this full year.
Yeah, if you look at their, their line items on their expenditure funds, they have sped tuition mass school, and sped tuition out-of-state school, and they already show a negative balance. They've expended forty-seven thousand currently. So they just, they have to run those into the negative.
Yeah.
I think the only thing they cannot do is, at any point, expend more than was raised and appropriated on town floor. That's the only, that's the only ceiling that they have to stop spending. They can, they have fluidity, line item to line item, the school committee can do adjustments from line item to line item. So they'll, you'll see all sorts of differing, there's a hundred thousand dollars over in one, and ninety-three thousand dollars short in another, because they, it comes and goes from different line items.
Correct.
So.
And we don't have the flexibility in the last sixty days to move money to or from that budget.
You can't move anything out of the school.
Right?
You can move in the other omnibus.
Yeah, okay. Just as another.
So with that understanding, you could wait till later in June. My request, on behalf of the staff that has to make this all happen, can we do it in May?
Yeah.
If you wait, can we do it in May?
I was gonna say, at latest, I would like to, you know, if we do, if we do or don't do anything in special, either way, it's with the knowledge that annual town meeting in May would, for me, be the latest, I would wanna see it, because that's a lot of shuffling around at the end of the year, when you're trying to close out with everything. Yeah. And I, I don't care if we want to do some.
I don't have to do that work, so it's. I don't have to do that work, so it sounds simple to me. I have no problem making it not, making it relatively simple. I don't know. What's the preference? Just wait till the annual, or do you want to do any right now in special?
I mean, on quick look, I saw, you know, just on, I think there was five line items, and they can only encumber those that they know, which is typically salary. That's the only ones that they'll encumber. They have a lot of line items that are not encumbered with budget balance, but those you can anticipate, they're all going to get spent at some point. So just, I think, five or six line items, there was just shy of $200,000 in budget balance. Now, that doesn't mean that there's not going to be a last-minute staffing change. So you might see some fluctuation on those where, you know, a need arises and they need some of those funds that they didn't realize they needed earlier. So even if it was 100, 100 left in there, you know, I'd say if we did half of it now, I'd be, you know, I can't, I can't imagine they're going to find the entire 308 in the budget. So they're going to need some of the money from reserve fund now. And if they can reestablish those two line items with a positive balance, that they're drawing from a positive and encumbering, at least then it'll help their closeout as well, so. Yeah, 150 this, this go around and see what the balance is coming into ATM and fund the balance then as needed.
Okay. The next section, Article 4, unraveling 5, 6.
So that was, real quick, that was a yes on doing, on making that change?
Yes.
Yes, there was consensus. Article 4 is appropriation for capital improvements for FY23 for current fiscal year of a $135,000. This is recommended by the Capital Planning Committee. Encompasses three projects. One is the popular mountain conservation area, surveying for $10,000. This is a far cry from the 100,000 it was a few years back, so, just for note, looks great. Financial software upgrade and replace for 75,000. This will allow the treasurer's office, accountant, et cetera, to get started on that in this fiscal year with a plan to hopefully deploy for July 1, for FY23, 24. And then Lillian's Way streetlight replacement for, or addition, replacement?
We're replacing everything.
Replacement, okay, for $50,000, and that's to just get it done now. Any questions for the capital planning on any of those or what they are?
Lillian's Way, are those distinctly different than the rest of the streetlights in town? They're the ornamental?
They're ornamental conduits on the ground.
Are we replacing them with the same?
There's no above-ground utilities, so there are no utility poles, so we can't avail ourselves of a overhead.
So it's going to have to be a...
It's going to have to be a self-supporting unit. I think we have, similar to the water tank conversation, we have some options. So we can talk about maintaining something very traditional with underground conduits and wires and putting that back together to a commercial standard. Or we could explore newer technology that may allow, like a solar option, or there may be another option, and that would avoid underground conduits, but it would bring a new complexity because it's a product that we haven't used before. So we want to bring both options forward.
So the 50,000 is a rough estimate on ballpark of?
If we have to do a brand-new service, new conduits, new running of wires to new bases, new fixtures. We're replacing one fixture downtown that was damaged in a car accident, and that replacement of an existing fixture with no conduits, $9,000. The only other question is, there were two fixtures on Lillian's Way. At minimum, we would like to replace those two, but it does not go down the entire route. So I think the way you all have handled this in the past is we typically call a meeting with the neighborhood where you're looking to upgrade or fix the streetlights so that you can have that conversation. So there was a little cushion into this estimate. If the select board met with the Lillian's Way residents and there was a desire to have an additional light or two, you'd have capacity for that.
Yeah, because there's nothing down near the cul-de-sac at the end, correct? It's all...
And they may be fine with that.
Correct.
But the three of you haven't had the conversation with them yet.
See, we did have something else for our water superintendent.
One of many who get to weigh in on that. But this capacity is to do what's there and extend it with some number of additional, which we hope to encompass what feedback and from highway superintendent and the community.
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions on Article 4 items? 5, we talked about, 6, and 7, which is the capital improvement and borrowing for the lead service lines. Article 8 is to rescind Article 25 of the special town meeting on February 9 of 1949, where the town voted to have the moderator appoint the three members of this, to appoint three members to serve as cemetery commissioners in conjunction with the town treasurer to handle the affairs connected with the cemeteries. And if rescinded, followed by an Article 2, adopt a bylaw for a cemetery commission, which is only a few sentences longer than the other one, what we're rescinding, which would be appointed by the select board, and the select board would serve as, may vote to serve as the cemetery commissioners, which is effectively what we've been doing, although not maybe formally appointed by the moderator.
I've had him appoint you.
Oh, you have? Okay. Well, I'm glad you're keeping us honest.
Yeah.
But that has been the norm for...
Decades.
Ever, or nearly ever, so do we forego that formality and just have it be the select board? Or they're designee? Questions on the cemetery one?
Is the, is the moderator currently aware of this change?
We talked about it when this issue first came up when we were doing the bylaw reviews. So at this point, it was well over a year ago. So I'm sure we will need to refresh his memory that we'd had that earlier conversation, but it's been a while. I don't think he seemed particularly passionate one way or the other about whether or not it stayed the way it is today or if it changed. He's obviously not involved in the day-to-day operations of the cemetery, so.
Article 10 is establishing an opioid settlement stabilization account where we can put the opioid settlement funds in, which is to be compliant with the obligations of receiving those funds. Short, the short version, right?
Correct.
Which is an amount of $22,716.85 at this time.
I'm trying to see if I can find a mechanical way that you don't have to keep moving the money into it every time we accrue more, because some payments are coming quarterly, some are coming in monthly. So this balance will accumulate again. The high level on this issue is that this is coming from a national settlement that's happening. The town is a party through the attorney general's office, so all the towns affected are getting it. And it's a formula based on the number of opioid prescriptions written to your communities, so that's where it's coming from. It's over a 16-year period, so this is something that's going to be with all of these communities for many years. But it's not a lot of money all up front, so it's coming, per agreement, it's coming in different amounts. The issue is that the settlement money goes into the general fund. If you don't appropriate it by June 30, it goes out as free cash, which is not in compliance with the settlement agreement.
Right.
So it needs to be available for the citizens for appropriation. And so the workaround that they've come up with is we can create a stabilization fund. We can move the receipts into that fund. And then at annual town meeting or any town meeting, present a warrant article recommending the appropriation to the voters to then expend the funds for the next 16 years. My only concern is, we do this in May, or we do this in March, or whenever you have your town meeting, we get this part done, and maybe I have another balance that has accumulated by June 30. I just don't want us to have to call a special town meeting in June simply to move that little bit of money that's left into there. But we may have to, unless there's a way that every time the money comes in, the treasurer can automatically just deposit the funds, as opposed to asking for it to be put into the account.
Can that just be a warrant article? Give it, like, this select board get the warrant article to dispose of buildings or accept grants or something like that? Is that something that...
That's what I'm trying to find out.
Okay.
If there's a way that a town meeting vote authorizes, like, it's a continuing authorization to put those proceeds in that fund. But the expense should always come back to town meeting, but I just don't know that town meeting is going to want to move $2,000 into a fund every time it comes in.
Right.
So we just need to work out those logistics.
So, and, there's no, so, and a traditional receipt just closes out every year, it doesn't recur, so you can't put it in there and hold it. You can't take more in, or it'll just go to the general fund anyway at the end of every fiscal year. So there's not a recurring receipts type.
We thought we could treat it like a special revenue. And the, the, there is no legal, there's no legal premise to withhold that money and treat it as a special revenue, anything different than a local receipt. And so holding it year after year, at some point, somebody'd come back and say, that's not where that money's supposed to be. It's supposed to cash out to the general fund.
Even though it has a settlement agreement that says it has to be treated that way?
The big asterisk on this is, we're not the only community going, this is a lot of logistical work to do a very common sense thing. And so my understanding is the legislature, which is now in a new session, may be considering a legislative act that would fix this and say, this one issue can be treated in this other way and it can be special revenue. If that doesn't happen by June 30, then we have to move this money anyhow.
So if we do this and then they do that, we probably then have to have a vote to move this out of this and into that, because now this is under a different law, because they moved it into a special appropriation.
So I was going to ask, you know, if funds can come in throughout the year, does it make sense to not do one now and just wait and do a special later in the year? For any, this plus any additional?
Or at least May at the annual town meeting?
Just as late as possible, you know, I mean, I don't think it makes sense to do one now just to do it.
I just don't want to wait till June 30 and go, oh, we didn't deal with the thing.
Forgot, and now we're out of compliance, yes.
So this money can be used for anything after the fact?
No.
No, it has ties to it.
What's this money tied, you got a trust fund, so, I mean, a stabilization fund, what's this money going to be used for in the long run?
So all it can be used for are preventative or education or training-related initiatives tied to the opioid epidemic. So it can be on youth prevention, it can be on training for first responders, it can be for other initiatives that tie back to those experiences that every community's been afflicted with. There is a question, and actually, our chief was asking about it, if we know of families in the community that could benefit from support for addiction treatment, would that be an allowable use, hosting support groups for those in recovery?
I was going to say, you can reach out to the opioid task force. There's a plethora of programs that are out there, you know, educational programs and, you know, self-help programs that, you know, we could avail ourselves of and for nominal fees, but, yeah, be part of some of those.
So I need to finish meeting with the staff to bring forward a budget recommendation to you all about how we should spend our first-year allotment. I want to be able to predict a little better what the funds received every year should look like, because it's not, it's not a lot of money. Right now, the town over 16 years is scheduled to get just over $100,000. So it's not a lot of money each year to spend on a lot of programming, but it is money that could be put to use. And so we just want to think out what your programmatic goals are, and that may evolve over time. So.
I wonder if, I mean, I think even the Quabbot House or some of those have programs that we could help fund or help with too.
With our CSO, guarantee we can find a use for some of those funds.
You can partner with neighboring towns and form MOAs, so a town could take the lead and other towns can help pool their resources to make sure the services are available to all the residents. So there's a lot of ways that we can be creative around this. I don't want to pretend like I know all the answers, because I think a lot of smarter people who are already working on this initiative are going to come forward to all the towns and say, this is what I think makes sense, and I'm sure they're going to be looking to partner, so, yeah.
To the earlier question about timing, do we know, are we going to know what we're going to get this fiscal year? Before the end of this fiscal year?
I know what, I think there's three contracts that have settled right now. And so I know those payment schedules with the understanding that actually one of them was known, and then I think they wanted to double up on payments and start moving money quicker. So I think we've already started to receive some of that. There are at least two other settlements in the process right now that will happen probably over the next few months to early summer, so those I don't know yet.
Right.
And I don't know if that's the end of the settlements. I don't know if it's just the five or if there's more.
Kind of feeling like it sounds like it makes more sense to put on the annual at least.
I think so.
Hold the article for now.
Because if we had 2,000 more between March and then, we'd have to have it again. I mean, that doesn't mean we won't have to have a June 30, but maybe we don't.
We're trying not to.
Yeah.
So you want me to hold this for another month? We'll put it on the draft ATM?
Until they send you that last payment on June 12.
It's going to be June 29.
I just don't want that.
Right.
Can we encumber it as a future transfer into the stabilization?
Yeah, I think if we did that, I think what we'd have to do is, make a future free cash appropriation.
Yeah, just to offset it, yeah, yeah, okay.
So hold it?
That's all the STM.
So we're going to hold this one?
Anything else on the STM? Anything we missed on the STM?
So just to clarify my notes, I am changing 76,000 back to 26,000. I am changing 308 to 150, and I am removing Article 10, and we're going to hold that to the ATM. Everything else stays as drafted.
Sounds right.
Okay?
Yes.
Okay.
When do you want to have this?
Cap, what's that?
When do you want to have this ATM, this STM?
Well, if we're waiting to approve it till next meeting, it can't be on the 28th.
Correct.
So I guess that's talking about March 30th. I don't, or March, wow, March 6th? I don't know how that looks to everybody.
Right?
What's that?
You need two weeks.
Two weeks to post.
I mean, well, no, we won't be ready to post it by 6:30 there, 7 o'clock that night, so, no way.
So review again on the 13th with a goal of posting by the 14th. So we're looking at March 6, so I can reach out to the moderator and ask him.
Didn't he give us March dates as well, or did we not ask him for that?
I think he gave us all February dates and said that Mondays in March tended to be flexible.
So you're thinking the 13th, you said?
6.
Oh, 6.
6.
March 6 is fine.
Dislocation?
Oh, I'm sorry, March 6 is what we're thinking, if we do a final review and approval at the next meeting on the 13th.
Dislocation?
For the STM?
Yep.
Yeah.
Start time?
7:00 PM?
7, okay.
We'll leave us time to meet before if we need to.
Right.
Probably start, have a board meeting at 6 and join if needed, and then we'll hopefully wrap it.
Go into it by 6:30-ish?
Okay, I will get those things moving.
Did, we don't have anything on the schedule for capital on the 13th, right, with us?
No, not unless you carry something from tonight.
So does capital want to make a motion on the STM articles tonight? And we can incorporate that into the draft, so then you guys are good?
I make a motion to approve the capital planning articles submitted for the special town meeting. Warrant, I don't have a date.
March 6.
March 6, sorry.
Recommend.
I recommend.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Who was my second?
Pete.
Thank you, sir.
That was a sloppy motion. I have not had to do that in a long time.
I jumped to English.
Right, okay.
Thank you. So Finn, comment, select board, we'll wait till next week, or next meeting. We'll review again, then we'll get your recommendations at that time?
Sure.
Cool, thank you.
Okay. Review the FY24 capital improvement budget requests.
So those all came out this afternoon in a separate email. I apologize for overlooking that. In my brain, those are already in the packet. So there should have been a two-sided page there, or two-page document that includes the capital planning committee's explanation for the recommendation. And then I summarized it in the table that you all have used year after year. Hopefully I understood everything correctly. Hopefully, I understood everything correctly.
So, being part of at least the last couple of discussions with capital planning, I'm familiar with them. So, floor is open to finance committee, rest of the board, questions, concerns. I'll just say, obviously, this was working from an idea of what our free cash position was, and, which is very healthy this year, but obviously not incorporating the fact that we know our operating budget also has increased with energy costs and variety of other things as well. So, whether or not the entire budget capacity is there or not is still to be reviewed. Once we kind of get everything put together, we finalize the school and all those pieces that are missing, so. Maybe I say that just to say I look at it with a, assuming we had the funds, and that we think we will.
The IP mill demolition, that's buildings 5, ABC, is that where?
Everything.
That's everything.
Except 8?
Everything but 8.
Mariah, everything but 8? Please, please join us, and if we have new numbers, right, because I think we were waiting on those.
So, we don't have new numbers yet. Ty and Bond is supposed to get that to us in the next day or two, probably. So, I'm hoping that I'll have that before your next meeting. But, the 1.8 million, in theory, should cover everything. That was me looking at past numbers and trying to get an idea. The thing that I will need you all to decide is what we want to go. So, I put that request in for the whole thing, but I need the guidance from you all, the community, of what that looks like. My hope was that if you all choose to move forward, at least with this intention of this being in the budget, that in March, we could have a community conversation where we say this is a reality at this point, because I think in past conversations we've had, it's been more of a, should we demolish it? What would you like to see? Whereas now, we would be able to say, we're considering putting this in the budget. What does this mean? What do you want to see happen?
So, you talked about figuring out that number, that 1.8 was for the entire demolition. But if I don't mistake, and the cost analysis for demolishing less buildings actually went up based on additional shoring and everything like that. So, if the decision was in the future that we don't want to take them all, the 1.8 may not be enough.
Correct, yeah, I should clarify. So, the 1.8 was me assuming we would take down either mostly everything or everything. So, that likely would not cover partial demolition if we chose to just take down a handful of buildings. It's really hard to kind of make those estimates right now. That's kind of why I'm really hoping that the Ty and Bond report will come back in the next few days, because that will give us, you know, a much better idea of what this could actually look like. I have kind of some recommendations that I'm happy to type up as we move forward through this, of kind of what those different combinations could look like, but without numbers to put to them, it's like I can conceptually say, this is what an interesting idea is that I think we should move towards, but obviously, it's kind of meaningless without the numbers.
Can I just ask Mariah to clarify something? So, when we talked about this in the past, Mariah, 1.8 is inclusive of the $600,000 grant.
Correct.
So, we would actually only be funding 1.2?
Correct.
Okay, okay.
1.8 is the anticipated total demo, with or without building 8, right?
I knew the grant existed, so when I put together this list, I put it down as 1.2.
Yeah, and when Brian put those, your numbers onto the
He did 1.8.
He did the 1.8 with the 1.2 and the 600 to show the two different funding sources, so.
So, for the rest of the FinCom, you guys are talking 1.8, they're seeing 1.2.
Yeah, it's two different funding sources.
And to clarify, that $600,000 can be used whether it's partial demolition or full demolition.
Right. The only reason I ask is I want to be very clear that if we put this into the ATM budget as something that we're asking for, it's with the understanding that we don't know what the final outcome is going to be yet, because we haven't had those, you know, as of today anyways, we don't know. We only had, well, we've had, we have had tons of meetings about what we should do over the years. But at least with a larger community, there's been a handful. It has not been an extensive one with, I think the last time we talked about it, it was going to be a subsequent follow-up with a little more direction about where we go.
Right.
And that direction ultimately has to come from us and capital about, you know, what we want to do.
I feel like it would be a more productive conversation if there was a decision made and you're asking for input on that decision. I think if you kind of pose a broad question of what do we do, that conversation gets very amorphous very fast. If you say, we have tentatively decided to take down everything except for building 8, what do you think of that? I think that conversation will be much more pointed, and people will say, oh, my goodness, no, or they will say, oh, my goodness, yes, or they will say, actually, what if we kept building 10? And I think that that conversation will go differently.
I agree. And that's something I talked about at the last time we met, is that we need to come with sort of a resolution about where we are. So, if your ask is that that resolution is full demolition, I'll let you know in a few minutes.
And I'm putting you all on the spot with capital, I mean, with some discussion about what that should be, I think, in those discussions as well? Or no? Like what, how much demo or what that demo should be?
It was leveled. It was leveled. Yes.
So, just to give you, I didn't want to speak for capital, but I recalled the same discussions, that the recommendation is that this funds it all, and we should do it all.
And I think the discussion after should be, okay, we're gonna level it now.
Now.
Now, what can we do?
Right. My recommendation would be to keep building 8, but that's because you'll never be able to rebuild that. It's in the river, and it also wouldn't be that expensive for someone to tear down later on if a developer does come in and chose to do it. And it's a really cool building.
That's the circular building you're talking about?
It's the one that's, like, the pump house.
Way in the back.
Way, the small one, way in the back down the hill.
Like halfway down the hill there. I was just too neat and standalone anyway.
Well, and I, one of the most recent walkthroughs, that was the building, it was just the walkthrough with, you know, all the different boards and commissions. There were several ideas thrown around of what that specific building could be, and they were all very cool and very interesting, and all very much suited for that site. So, I think it would be really neat, depending on how that site develops, to have that stay. Mariah, my only concern, when you say we're going to get updated demo figures, are we also going to get updated figures if we kept a couple of buildings? Because I know at the last community meeting, it was, that was a lot of the question, what will this cost? What will this cost?
So, there's, I think it's five scenarios that we're asking for feedback on. Full demolition, I think full demolition except for building 8, the originally proposed buildings that I had asked for that grant fund for, which was part of 4, 5,
7, I think.
7 and 10?
Something like that.
Basically, at the back, kind of section that's all crumbling.
Yeah, the ones that are falling in.
And then, there was one or two other options that I don't remember off the top of my head.
I mean, we're diving in now, is there, and the non-capital members of finance? All, some, none? Opinion tonight or not ready to? That's okay, just curious.
Am I gonna chime in so we're not staring at each other quietly?
Well, I mean, I was asking finance, but I, the board too, yeah, I mean, if you would, I don't.
Go down, go around.
Go right around? Well, you offered, so you first.
Full demo and leave 8.
Same.
Yeah, I mean, I've heard enough responsive that the only request I would have is if we're going to do that, is that it's known that we are going to advantageously, I mean, it just, I want to make sure we do something with that property other than just tear it down and then leave it as grass. I want, you know what I mean? I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to spend $2 million tearing it down to just leave it there as an open field. I'm not opposed to using that as the platform of tearing it all down, leaving building 8, but then really start honing in on future steps of what that means.
Well, you just spent how much money on a listation down there?
I was gonna say, $380,000 or something?
Down there for future?
Yeah.
I think if, if you all choose to put this in the budget, I think that we could have, I don't know what meeting this takes place at or if it's at the community conversation, but I do think that we should set up a timeline for putting out another RFP. I think that we should give ourselves enough time to advertise and have conversations, because I do think it will take time for people to learn that this is now a property that doesn't have a mill. But I do think that we could also capitalize on any news that comes of tearing it down. So, I think that that will be kind of a balance we have to strike. But I do think that part of that conversation should be, okay, if we're tearing that down this summer, then in late fall, early winter, do we start, you know, re-releasing an RFP to see what goes there? Or whatever that timeline is.
So, just my final thought on that is when we do that, not in the same vein as we did the RFP with the two buildings that we just sold, I would not want this one to be quiet on price. Price would be part of the, if we're going to pony up $2 million to tear everything down, the price they're willing to pay for a lot like that to come in and develop it is an important piece of that RFP.
Part of the grading.
It's part of the grading, not silent to the grading and then only found out afterwards. Just my thought, so, I'll move on and let somebody else give them two cents.
Just a footnote, if I may.
Take it down, leave building 8. I think there were some really cool ideas thrown around for building 8. I have driven by that place long enough, and I'm very surprised someone hasn't been injured, hurt, or worse in that place. And so, I think it's time for it to go and for us to move on and see what the future can hold for that site.
Yeah, I think a full demo would save them building 8.
I didn't take the tour, so I don't know what building 8 is, so, but, you know, we all did, we all agreed to take it down anyway, so, whatever the recommendations for the rest of the people, I'd go along with.
Yeah, pretty much everything that they all said, save building 8, and also make sure that the public understands that the police and the DPW are down there multiple times every week. And so, we're, we're paying someone to keep going down and keep nailing boards on windows and doors. And save building 8.
Yeah, we talked about this in capital, I like the idea of everything except building 8.
As much as I would really love to see something done with the buildings that are there, it looks like we've tried that, but you can't really find anybody who will do anything with it. And it's a huge financial liability to the town, not only insurance-wise or if somebody gets hurt-wise. It's literally cost the town millions to deal with that. And, and I'm with Scott, I don't want to be a vacant lot with a picnic table for $2 million.
With a several hundred thousand dollar pump station sitting there, ready to go.
Yeah, I mean, we have a very developable site if this building is, these, this whole structures are gone. Hate to see them gone, they're amazing buildings, but, yeah, I agree, they should be gone. And saving something that's already there by the river, sort of like years ago would have been nice, we saved the well by the Usher plant. You never replace it, but you need it. So, saving, saving something that you can't replace again is building 8 is a good thing to do.
Yeah. I, I did tell capital planning when I met with them, but I don't propose this lightly. These buildings are, there's a lot of history there, they're incredible buildings, and it's very unfortunate that we're in this position, but I do think that it's for the best of the town.
It's hard to tell somebody spending $2 million or a million and a half is a great financial thing, you know, until somebody goes in there and gets hurt or killed, or
Exactly.
and it just crumbles, and five years from now, it'll be $8 million instead of $2 million.
Yeah. No, I agree. So, just looking at the rest of the funding, you know, either Bill or anybody from finance that's not on capital that has any comments about the totality of the 2.89 million roughly amount requested. I'm just reviewing the recommended request form a little bit further. And I'm also reading that, I appreciate the second page of the declined request as historical information. That was, it's great to know, like, how you got where you got, and not, it's not just that we want to spend $2.9 million. It's you really went through, what, 12 million? I mean, there's a, there's a lot of, you know, a lot of projects there that you had to say, okay, we've got to push these aside because, for X, Y, and Z, but this is where we ended up.
I like this too, because we had this discussion the last time about a few years ago. Stuff was taken off the board. Sorry, forgot about what it was, but we're trying to remember.
Generator.
Was the generator. Awayed stuff from capital that we already approved on, so, but now we got something to fall back on. The other thing back with this whole thing was with the mill down there, you don't want another orange.
No.
You know, so, that's just, you know, the opinion.
Scott, can I just touch on one thing about the decline request, because I just want to put it out there?
Yep.
Because people are going to see Swamp Road, Swamp Road Bridge. The number, probably the largest reason why we declined that is after speaking with Brian and Mariah about it, it's just not at a point where they're prepared to come forward for funding. So, there's work going on behind the scenes, and so, as soon as that, they are at that step where they have, you know, a better idea of what's going to happen, how are they replacing it, the engineering, you know, all that kind of stuff has been done. We know that that project will be coming back. So, I just want to make it, make sure that, you know, all the residents know, it's definitely not something we have forgotten about or we're not expecting, it just wasn't at a point yet to be brought forward to capital. So, that's why it's on the decline list, but amongst us at our discussions, it was very much, it was declined with the knowledge knowing that it is coming back.
Well, and just to add to that, there's 300,000 or so, I believe, already allocated for the engineering, and that's what's in progress, so, it's just not there.
Right.
Well, somebody had asked, for somebody not on capital improvement.
Yes.
I thought just as, from a financial point of view, I'm extremely pleased to see the requests that are put here in orderly fashion, the things that are declined for now and why, but more pleased that there's a process. Used to be, people, we'd be sitting here doing the annual town meeting thing, and somebody would come in and say, wow, the roof's gone, that's a half a million, we need a new fire truck and two plow trucks to fall apart, and everything comes at once. And this, this document here, and moving forward, is a result, is a result of careful, thoughtful planning financially. We know these things are going to come up someday, so you plan, two years, five years, 10 years, you know, what do things need to be replaced? And I applaud the capital planning committee for doing this. It hadn't been done for years, and it shows every taxpayer here, we're doing this in a very orderly fashion. Now, they may agree or disagree on an item, it's up to them, it's their money, but they're inclined to, more inclined to agree when they see that it's an orderly process, and it's their fellow citizens who are putting this together, it's not some outside firm from New York or Boston, so, thank you.
On a, on a different note related to, I saw the school with the HVAC system, and that was a, that was a long discussion at the last school committee meeting related to what is the, what is the interim fix? Because everybody kept hearing, well, we're, we're asking the town for the money to replace the system, but we are now sitting in January, and some rooms are cold, some rooms are hot, so what's the fix? And I'm wondering, and I know they haven't asked for this, but is there a likelihood that we could actually move this from annual to the special?
But it's grant, it's not.
Oh, this one's grant, I forgot about that.
They're looking to.
From DESI for approval on that.
Right.
We applied back in the fall. As soon as they make the award, assuming they do, and they say it's, contract's assigned, and we're ready to go, we can start. And this will start with a, an assessment of the existing system and identification of recommendations, high priority to low priority, of what can be done to the existing system. of what can be done to the existing system to get it back into, into normal operation ranges without having to replace hopefully every, every component. So we're waiting on DESI right now on that piece. I do expect, I'll be honest with you, $100,000 that the grant will fund, I do not believe will take care of everything.
No.
But until we have the recommendation, similar to the engineering conversation that we had about time bond earlier, without that analysis and those recommendations and priorities, it would be a guess at this point as to how much money needs to be requested from capital. So we didn't make that request to capital yet, but I think we, during that discussion, all acknowledged that there will likely be another request coming once we have that document.
So just so you know, the request was made that the principal and superintendent, they have a building maintenance line item that still had a balance, a budget balance between two different, of about $25,000, that they start tapping into some of that to do immediate needs assessment through JAMROG, through whoever, in order to ensure that they have some heat in some rooms that, you know, is not adequate now, knowing that this full process is going to be done if DESI approves it, but waiting on DESI is not always the fastest approach in ensuring that the 100-plus students and the, you know, 60 or so staff have adequate heat throughout the building today rather than.
Have a call for them tomorrow.
Thank you. Other than that, I don't, I don't have any concerns.
Any other, around any of it?
Bridge, I say that and I have a question. Bridge Street, well, it's a higher amount than I recall last time. Is that because of the change on how far we're tying into Route 2? Or there was some change on specs there?
We're gonna have to change there. We're also going to have to, the amount that was coming back when they were doing the cost estimations, we originally had been hopeful that Maple Avenue, the resurfacing and the reconstruction of Maple Avenue would have been able to fit within that initial estimates.
And it's not.
And it would not. This allows us to do both of those.
Okay.
It is not inclusive, I just want to be clear, there is a culvert that passes under Bridge Street, and also we need to revisit the fire pond off of Maple Avenue. That stream system connects. And so we will treat both of those projects as a separate project with the engineering, the wetlands delineation, the permitting that goes along with an active stream crossing in those two areas. So we have had a conversation with capital about how big that project could get if we include all of those, and our current recommendation is just to focus on the wall and deal with the stormwater management on that section, get that stable, repair the surface and give the longevity back to Maple Avenue, and then target those two stream crossings as a separate project.
Okay.
You will see a note on there for POTW number three being repaved. We would tie that into this project, and while they're already mobilized down to there, take care of POTW number three. I have a request to bring to the three of you just to change the engineering scope of services to incorporate this work into the bid package that's drafted and is almost ready for your review. But that's, it got really, really big talking with capital. And then we realized, we didn't, not only financially would that be unrealistic, but even just capacity-wise for the town, the delays on permitting alone would make this project not happen in FY '24. So I think we all agreed after several weeks of discussion, narrow it back down. But this amount is more than we initially talked about two years ago.
It's probably double.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it seemed a bit higher.
And we've seen wild swings, we haven't done a bid in the last year or so, but prior to that, we saw wild swings in the bid. Sometimes a million dollar stretch between low and high bid. So I, I don't know how tight those bids will be for this next round.
Okay.
I do have a bid opening on the culverts this week for Relux Street, so that may give me a hint as to what the build, the construction market's gonna look for this type of work. And if it's looking a little tighter, that may inform whether or not we think this estimate's sufficient.
Thank you. I was.
Go ahead.
I wasn't there for, I think, most of this discussion for capital. I just, knowing we've approached most of our work for roads, you know, streets and neighborhoods now and the complete streets kind of philosophy, I know there's not necessarily sidewalks there today or any of those kinds of things, but was that discussed at all? Is that already kind of encompassing everything more than just we're resurfacing roads, right? Like that, that mindset's different now, right? So I just want to make sure
Right.
That, that this project does that.
We had not looked to put sidewalks on Maple Avenue. We did have a conversation about Bridge Street and what could be done for accommodations. The layout specifically with that wall makes it almost impossible to really widen it and do those types of changes. You'd have to add more walls in, not only down to POTW number three, but probably stabilize the embankment up. As you all know, we've had a lot of conversations about the pedestrian activity that happens in that area from our neighbors in Wendell, supporting parking for Farley Ledges and the New England Trail on our side, and potentially the shared use path if that does come to fruition in the future. So we have had conversations about allowing bike access off of Route 2 if that is something that's let's alone. They are doing it right out here, so if it makes it as far as Farley, it's gotta go somewhere. Could going down Bridge Street be an option if the shared use path was to happen? So we are having those holistic conversations. Bridge Street is going to be a very tight layout with its position.
So it may end up being an outlier from the full complete streets.
But it doesn't mean that Maple Avenue has to be. Maple Avenue has a generous layout, it's very flat, so that could be something. We, we did not have that conversation, but we could.
Okay. The fire department requests for the diesel exhaust system replacement of current or new?
We don't have any.
We don't have one.
And I will point out for that one, Chief Wonka has asked for that for a couple of years in a row, and it has always been pushed. So we kind of felt strongly that this was the year to go ahead and do that, and it will be for both stations.
Oh, okay.
And it's gone up, what, double?
No, no, I think about $50,000 he added to it to accommodate.
To accommodate both? No, to accommodate inflated cost.
Yeah.
It was 100 for both before, right, I believe?
I have to look at the prior request, but yeah, I believe.
Sorry, I wasn't to include the second one, just to.
Financial, we talked about. The door access and security, is that a complete redo? That system's just not functioning the way it?
The system not only does not function correctly, it operates on a on-premise machine, which is no longer, the operating system is no longer compliant.
That's what I thought.
But the hardware needs to be modified. So it's, we, we tried to see, can we reuse existing infrastructure and you cannot.
Okay.
It's a full retrofit.
The age is pretty significant.
20-plus years old?
Probably. Wow.
Yeah.
And the camera system is not where we'd want to be today.
Right. It's original to the building.
Probably be good with your house. It's not, but it's close.
Everything else we've touched on.
I hear we have a resident expert on access control might want to help. You turned your head at the right time.
We may have a second one that we could also look through, goodness gracious.
So out of all of that, we are looking at just 125 for raise and appropriate?
Correct.
That's, that was a rough adjustment to what we have for free cash list, the anticipated STM, so.
Right.
Probably revisited when we actually finalized the STM and it's approved and see where that drops through.
But also knowing that we have to hold back some of that if we're anticipating a.
For example, the school and, yeah, things that we need to have capacity, just in case.
If we don't want to overspend and then.
Correct. Either have it in RNA or have it in free cash. Just have it somewhere.
When I start building your recap sheet, because we're getting to that point in your process where you start to build that, I will put a placeholder on there so that we don't lose this conversation.
Yeah, it's almost like the encumbrance line of like, we want to make sure we hold that just in case.
Right.
Okay.
Questions and concerns on the capitalist? Thank you for the capital for all that work. And it looks good, obviously, if we look at the overall and have to come back to it because it doesn't fit or whatever, we'll, we'll call those meetings and look at it.
Actually, I'd like to say as well, thank you to the capital planning group because I've been unavailable the last couple of weeks, sick, and then they picked this up and ran with it and did a great job. This, this looks excellent, thank you all.
We're just glad to have our chair back healthy and safe.
And I'm glad that they all did it for the first three or four weeks when I wasn't there, so. There's really a core group of three who's carried this.
We try.
I brought cookies.
I didn't come that night, nobody told me. All right, nothing else for capital for now? Oh, wait, no, maybe that's not true. I don't know, I gotta look at my list. Yes, Mariah? Yes, yes, the master project list. Please come up. There's the one thing that we've talked about a few times at a high level, but not necessarily incorporated, was how does this fit in with capacity from department and staff and all of that side, so.
So I think Brian included the, the actual grid of the project list and then also a memo that I wrote, kind of explaining a few things. And so I think everyone here has maybe seen it, but since last year I've added a column to the master project list that rates intensity of a project. And it's me kind of guessing how many hours across the staff time it'll take each week. And so you'll see if it's high, medium, or low. Six plus hours a week is high intensity, one to five is medium, and then less than an hour a week is a low intensity project. You'll see in bold, there are some projects, those are ones that I'm considering kind of a major project, whether it's by high intensity or it could lead to a high intensity project. For example, like Church Street Bridge design, we're mostly through that. It's not a high intensity project anymore, but the result of that is going to be a very large project. So those are the, the main ones that I'm kind of structuring this around, and then I think we kind of fill in other projects around that. But there is a few things that I really could use input on. One of them is the zoning bylaw updates, so the planning board at some point will talk directly to the select board about this. But we are working backwards from a potential June special town meeting, if you would entertain that. The grant that we have for the consultant to do those bylaw updates, the grant ends June 30th. So sometime before June 30th, we'd like to have a town meeting to approve the bylaw updates. I would propose that it's a special town meeting because it's a lot. So that's one question.
Mariah, hold on one second, Brian's printing copies for.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, that's okay, that's okay.
Well, of the project list, hopefully with a bigger piece of paper.
If it's on eight and a half by 11, good luck.
That's what I'm saying.
There's a lot on.
There's a lot of sliding.
Yeah.
Around.
You have to like go back and forth.
Where's that 110-inch screen up there? It's just like.
A projector.
Cast to it?
I guess we have a projector, but it's right there, it doesn't help much.
We'd have to flip.
Yeah.
Make it happen.
People want to fund it. Wait, you mean flip the room or flip the TV or the, never mind, it's gonna stop. Say what?
It used to be up there.
It did? I don't really know why we flipped it, but we just did. This stuff probably might have been part of it, just having the setup, but I have no idea. I've never tested over there.
The zoning bylaws might not be a, a conversation that you need the, the entry for. It also isn't a thing that you're all concerned with, so I didn't want to bog down your time with that. But that is a thing that the select board.
What's your question? Would we entertain a Q4, a June 30 special or a June special for it?
Yeah, late June.
Is that your question for the board?
It is.
We can answer that, whether the project sheets are out here yet or not?
Yeah.
I mean, I think so, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, it already looks like we're gonna have other housekeeping items for a June, a June, late June meeting anyways.
Yeah.
So, you know, I know you want to stand alone because it's a.
It's a lot.
It's a lot, but, you know, it would probably be primarily that, but also a few housekeeping items that we could, you know, add to it.
But I think it's not in addition to the ATM, it's more the feeling. I mean, we've all talked about it a few different times, when you try to put bylaws on top of an already sometimes three-hour ATM.
15 pages of bylaw changes, zoning bylaw changes, it's just massive.
It's gonna be about YFIC?
Yeah.
It's everything.
We should do the codification at the same time. Couldn't resist. So I guess the answer to that for the planning board is, yes, we, we would be interested in entertaining a late year special for that, a late fiscal year.
All right, you all have your, your maps. So my hope with this is to kind of map out the, the upcoming projects that we have, and you'll see it goes pretty far out this time. We're looking at going into FY '26 at this point. Going through this exercise made me realize that we have some projects that really I would not recommend overlapping. It would just be too much to have multiple major projects going on. And so, for example, like Church Street Bridge and Swamp Road Bridge, I, I don't think that we can handle two bridge projects at once, nor are we ready to complete Swamp Road Bridge yet. But I put, let's see, where is Swamp Road Bridge construction? I put that out to, yeah, out to FY '25. And one of the big ones that I actually asked the select board to skip over earlier is town hall renovation or construction. I work in town hall every day and I would love to have a nice new or renovated town hall. I don't think that we are going to have the ability to do, really start that in earnest until FY '25, FY '26. And that's something that I would like some feedback on, because that's kind of a trade-off with, for example, like if we do the DPW building construction, which in my mind, we already have that started, so I would not push that farther out than town hall. I don't know thoughts on that.
Well, I'll let you guys go, but. I think my thought was moving forward with town hall feasibility and makes sense to try and, it's already funded and I'd hate to push it out too far, but I also understand if you do the feasibility now, knowing that you're gonna wait for construction until FY '25 or '26, it's a moot point, you're wasting your time.
Yeah, and I should clarify, it would be the feasibility in FY '25, '26, construction probably wouldn't be until FY '27.
'27.
And part of that is, we could do the feasibility study now, but then we're gonna have to update the numbers again when we get closer. And so my thought is, I think we could just wait, and when we're closer to when we could actually complete construction, do the feasibility study, have that be in lines that we would complete the feasibility study in September, say, so that we have fresh numbers for that capital planning, for that capital planning round to kind of start. Which is what I wish we did with the DPW building, but we didn't know that so many things were gonna happen.
Yeah, I would hate to, I hate to, to say that we should delay the town hall feasibility study in any way. I, I think it's solely needed, but I, I think when you look at IP and, and the two bridges that we need to do, they're, they, they come in as priorities. And actually, if once the IP, if the IP is completed, it's, it's a resource that we can use to, to have that discussion with the, how the town hall building fits in future-wise, so.
Right.
So it, it, it does a couple of things for us, so. So it, it, it does a couple of things for us, so. So I, I, you know, I, I would be in favor of holding off on it. I'm not happy about it, but you can't do everything at once.
I'm gonna have the differing opinion. Not that we can construct it, but, but I think we should continue with the RFQ and the feasibility, if we can resource that, and I'm not as concerned if it's a year or two later when we actually go to it, because my take on the DPW building is, yes, we, we tabled it and then come back to it for a number of months, but that project's already realistically was probably a year plus of effort. We've digested a little bit. It's gonna be another six months or so probably, realistically, before we have a final design that we feel is the one we should put forth. Then there's a cycle of funding it, and, and, and then there's a couple of years. I mean, when I look at Church Street Bridge, it's from initial start to potential completion. I mean, are we talking four years?
I was gonna say, pretty, probably.
Give or take, and there was some feasibility and some design and some public engagement. Then there was some, there was a little lag. There's other things happened, right? And we had the same exact kind of thing. And then we came back to it. We refreshed the designs with our kind of a focus. Came up with the one we wanted to present, went out. We are a year past that, still working through permitting and funding and other ways to do that, for the best of the town, hopefully not all out of pocket. And we're still not even started construction. So, I mean, I look at that and I'm like, even if we could get it, you know, even if Swamp Road's, you know, a year behind that, even if the DPWs, you know, behind that, it might take us two or three years to come up with a design for the town hall, a redesign, rebuild, whatever that is, that may take us two or three years to get to one that the board and the finance committee and the capital planning committee are all in consensus with input already from the public to go, okay, this is the one we're gonna pick and put our name behind at whatever millions of dollars, because it's a big thing. And then it might still take us three years to fund it and even begin, you know, depending on how, how we go to it, and I'm not saying it's, and it's no money to go refresh a design if we've gotten that, to that, but I personally would rather we have a finalized design we're all happy with on the shelf that we can pull down when we have the capacity and go, I just need some fresh numbers, because that's not super expensive. And then we're ready to go. Because if a grant fund opportunity comes down the road, if you're that close, you're in the top running. And we don't have projects that are that. I want them like, you know, bid ready or 25% designed and, and ready on the shelf. I'd rather take those, dust them off and get new numbers and go, okay, we're ready to go, than to not have that and go, well, we got three years of design ahead of us before we could even ask you for that money. But thanks, wish we could take that opportunity. I'm not saying those will be there, but I commend it from that side. If we can do some of those, they take much longer than we realize, and even if it was our only project, I don't think that would change a lot. So I don't know that it's a matter of resourcing in the steps, rather than the steps take a long time.
I know that Senator Comerford recently proposed a bill that it has to do with funding municipal buildings, and I believe that town halls are included on that. And so over the next two years, that will be considered. And so that will be interesting to see if there is a new funding source, because right now there really isn't any kind of grant funding for anything like this. We could probably get a USDA loan, which might be, you know, an advantageous borrowing, but it's, it won't be a grant. So that's an interesting thing to see what happens with that. The other thing I would just consider is, we're about to do quite a bit of kind of town land alterations with, if we do the IP mill demolition, we'll now have a blank lot. Do we consider that as we're looking at where town hall goes? And then the new cemetery, if we are, we have some lots that we could consider for this, that we don't currently really have access to. If we were putting in an access road to get a cemetery, does that open up a space where we would consider putting town hall? Those are a few questions that I've been kind of thinking about of when we're considering, when we're doing a feasibility study, you kind of start with, well, what are the locations that you're looking at and what are the constraints of those locations? And we might have new locations that we're not considering right now over the next couple of years.
This is my opinion. I'm not saying.
I'm not saying that it's wrong.
No, but I was gonna, you know, the design concept, while I was agreeing with you when you were saying it, and that, you know, having something that's 25% on the shelf, ready to go, so if something like, you know, from the senator's office, or if there was grant opportunities, we were like, we're already one step forward, let's go ahead and move forward with that. However, getting to that level of design and not knowing if you're putting a building in the lot back here at IP Mill or up on the middle of a mountain somewhere, are, like, the design may have to be completely different. And so it's, I think it might be hard if you don't know where the location is. When you first started saying it, I said, I agree. In my mind, I said, I agree. I think it's, you know, it's good for a lot of different reasons, but I also think we need to answer some other finite questions first about location being one of them, because that may have a big impact on, on design, to be able to have that 25% design ready to go.
I don't know that, and maybe I commend it from a different angle, but I don't know that. I remember when we talked about this, now it's two or three years ago. It's also possibly renovation. It's not necessarily new.
Correct.
Build, and it's not necessarily in a new site. And so all of those things haven't even been decided. And so part of that feasibility to me, at least to some stage, is deciding if it is new. And then if it's new, we're at a stage to, where's new go and does that affect how we design or not? And it may not. As long as the footprint, and I'll just use the library because it's across the street. If the footprint's 8,000 square feet, then is there a lot that's 8,000 square feet? Doesn't matter if the lot's on top of a mountain or not, unless you gotta build a road. If you're gonna build a road, that's a different part of the problem, but it's not the building itself. Because if you needed 8,000 square feet, you still need 8,000 square feet, whether you have a curb cut or you have a two mile driveway or entrance. So I guess, it's a different perspective that I started from, but.
I, I think a feasibility right now is a little cart before the horse. I don't think we're ready to. I, I know from serving on the library building committee, there were a lot of steps where there was a lot of public involvement, and I would assume that with something as important as our town hall, we would have that as well. And so my fear would be, we move forward with the feasibility now, and you have that public involvement now, and maybe a design is selected, and then it sits on a shelf for three or four years, and there's different members sitting here, there's different people sitting here, and there's a different makeup in our, in our residency, and those designs get pulled down off the shelf and everybody goes, oh my gosh, what were they thinking? And the whole thing is scrapped and redone. And I say that coming from a place of, and Charlie, you, with being on the library building committee, we looked at four or five prospective designs, and there was, and Bill, you were part of it too during the feasibility. There were designs that people pulled out and we were like, yes, this is it. And there were other designs where we went, oh, no, sir, we're gonna pass on that. But it, and it was, you know, that was a, a committee of seven, and it was all very much that everybody had their own where they thought the design should go. And I think doing a feasibility at this stage before, I don't want it to feel rushed. The town hall is a very important building, and I don't want it to feel like it is being rushed or it isn't given its due process. And I feel like doing plans to just get them on a shelf and just have them sit, for me, makes me feel like the, the process is rushed, and I, I do think the location is important, because if it is going to be somewhere on, you know, kind of Route 2, in a, in a similar location to where it is now, we might choose a very historic looking building. If it's gonna be sitting up on a mountainside, we might want a log cabin. So I do think to some degree, you know, the location does matter, and I, as much as personally I struggle to see a town hall at the IP Mill site, I, I think that's a very intriguing idea. And so I, I think it's difficult because I serve on capital as well, and so I've, I've been a part of those projects where we have had to ask for them to go back and get updates and come back with costs, and it, it's kind of a frustrating process for all involved. Because it's a lot of, you know, Mariah or Brian or whomever the department head, putting the work in to bring it to us, and we're just going, but you, you, you did this three years ago, so now go back to the drawing board. And so that's a waste of staff time to some degree. And so I think I would like to see it when we feel we can really give it the, the time it deserves.
I'm fine with it. There's only a majority that wants, that feels that's the right choice, and I, it is what it is.
I don't know if there's like an official decision that needs to be made. I was just looking for feedback, so I'm happy with that. If the answer is like, leave it for now and reevaluate later.
It's not my sole decision, but, I mean, you're looking at me, because I had the dissenting opinion, which is totally fine. I think the only decision point is, are we continuing to review the RFP right now? RFQ, because we have it on our docket. So if it's going out a fiscal year or two, then scrumming that off the agenda for my own selfishly one last thing to work on.
Man, I just, I spent so much time going through it earlier today. I have notes on that I wanted to talk about.
Well, I do wonder if all those notes are fresh, if it's worth going through those, making those updates, and then even if we don't come back to it for a year, we have those incorporated. Because quite frankly, I don't think the RFQ is going to change much, whether it's released now or in a year or two. We're gonna be looking for the same qualifications.
No, you're right.
Should I keep going?
I just, can I ask a couple of questions? I'm, you know, I look at a lot of the low intensity ones that you have on here, and I'm assuming when you have them as low, I know you said, you know, what is it, less than an hour a week? How many of those on, I think Masworks, the first one I think got done today, correct?
Yes.
The wastewater.
There's some training that has to be done, and that's it.
But other than that, that one's off.
Do you have some financial reporting have to do with the US Treasury?
Okay. So I'm just looking at like the quarter, you know, third quarter, which is what we're currently in.
There's a lot.
Yeah, there's a lot, and, and most of them are low, and I'm assuming it's just a lot of, you know.
And some of them are almost done.
Right. That, that's what I was gonna say. How many of those are gonna go away within, are we anticipating any rollover other than the handful that you put on there? It looks like seven of them you have anticipated are longer. By codification, the software, things that we are just now, you know, getting into.
Recycling Center will move into fourth quarter.
Okay.
Well, it's more than that. We haven't funded it or done anything.
Yeah, it'll probably be FY '24, quarter one, two.
We don't even have money. We didn't even allocate it on the capital plan, so.
For the recycling center?
Yeah. So.
So you want me to extend that out into quarter one of FY '24?
I think right now it goes through this, the rest of this fiscal year. We don't know, because we don't know when we're funding it, right, beyond that? But it will require more time.
The, the zoning bylaws will technically, I guess, extend to the end of the year. We won't have that done. Hopefully, most of the work will be done by March, April, but we'll still be doing community engagement stuff around that.
Traffic code, I mean, it's not going to be done till Q4 technically, because it's gotta go to a meeting. Right? Or, no, we adopted it. Never mind. Yeah, never mind.
Yeah, we did that one already.
Yep.
So I, part of my struggle is I'm looking at, so, you know, medium intensity items that take a little bit more. There's a couple of high intensity items sprinkled in there as well. But I'm also trying to couple that with department to make sure that, because I could look at three high intensity, but three different departments, and I don't know how, from looking at this, I don't know the administration piece between you, Brian, department heads. How much of that is shared? Is that shared equally? Are we, if we have three high intensities, that far too much based on, you know, so I don't know.
I think those are the things that we can't really put overarching metrics to. It's like we have to look at the specific projects. And it also just depends on like the department. So for example, like the Bridge Street wall and reconstruction of POTW number three, like that's gonna be a huge undertaking. That's gonna be me. It's gonna be Glenn. It's gonna be Pete. It's gonna be Brian. And so that's gonna really span across many departments. Whereas the, the new cemetery feasibility procurement, which is another thing I have a question about, is just, like, that will be a committee that will likely be doing most of that work and then bringing back a report.
Well, the intensity, I just have a question, kind of followed to what Scott just said. Is it intensity for the department listed? Is it intensity for administration? Or is it across everything?
Everyone.
Because the police department, body cams might be high intensity for them and maybe IT, but no one else is involved once the procurement was issued. So you don't know. It might be low when you divide it by 16 departments, but it's not low when you divide it by the stakeholders.
Should I change that to high?
I'm just asking the question, and the one, and I'm using that one, but the one that caught my eye first was treasure and accounting software update. The entire changing of all of our books and all of our account codes and getting that all ready in three months to go and change the whole million, $12 million budget over is huge, if you ask me, for the treasurer and the accountant.
There's a lot of projects.
Not a lot for everyone else until the first quarter of the new fiscal year, when they have to learn what they need to do differently.
What you're touching upon is the challenge that Mariah was trying to articulate when we were working in the office around defining this.
Yeah.
And I think at some point it was, let's put a definition down and test the definition.
Right.
And get feedback.
So there's a lot of things that if I'm not involved in them, I'm guessing here. And so I'm happy to change. If someone comes to me and says like, I am spending five hours a week on this, okay, let's, let's change it, because I'm not part of the, the conversion, so.
Not a judgment to say your, your data's right or wrong. It's to understand, how did you get there?
Yeah.
So then we know where we need to adjust.
So my intention is for this to be across anyone who is working on this project. So administration, you know, people actually on the ground doing the work. But also, that's going to change depending on where you're at with the project. So for example, the Masworks forced sewer, that was a high intensity project. At this point, it's a low. Like, we just finished today. We've just been waiting for months. So some of this is not going to be stagnant across the whole time it's on here. So I'm trying to make this reflect what's going on now or what I'm anticipating happening at its most intense point, I guess.
Okay.
So I know we met, it was just a few weeks ago, we met and we talked about this project schedule. And, and part of what I had said in that meeting was trying to tailor what you and in your collaboration with other department heads and Brian felt was that you all had the bandwidth for. And I know your feedback to me was, it would be nice to know what the board and boards and the town wanted to move forward with, and then you could then look at that and say, yes or no, I think we can accommodate all of that based on our workload and, and our bandwidth internally. So it's sort of two opposing views of which one's putting the cart first. And we're both saying, well, tell me what you want to do and we'll see if we can fund it. And you're saying, well, you let me know what you want to do as a town, and we'll tell you if we can fit it in our schedule.
Right.
And so it's, that's the battle I think we're having tonight.
Deb had sent over the, the capital plan, just as like a, they put it together and then sent it to Brian and I to say, where does this, like, what does this look like when you look at all of this together? And that was really helpful, even though I had been going to some of the meetings, I already had an idea of what was going on. Like, seeing that on paper and being able to say, okay, this project falls in this quarter and looking at that. And I think it's helpful for me to get guidance of, these are our priority projects. Fit smaller projects in around this, or we know there's gonna be emergencies that always pop up. But for example, like the, the cemetery feasibility, we haven't talked about that in a while. And so I'm kind of just curious where that lands, things like the, the town hall. You might have said, when I came here tonight, like, we want to do that this year. You know, I just, some of these, I'm picking a spot and putting them there, but I don't know where they land for other people.
Right. And I guess, I was just gonna follow up with that, saying, so Mariah's gone through and given us what you think is a, is a map forward on all of the projects, and I guess it's our job now to just pick it apart and say.
Yes.
I don't mean pick it apart in a bad way.
No, that's what I would love. Like, I'd love for you to say.
Pick it apart and really say, do we want to make any sweeping changes? Or are we satisfied with the trajectory of the master project schedule? And barring any other input from this board and from capital and finance, this is the map that's gonna go forward, and unless we want to make changes, and if we collectively have any desire to shift something from one timeline to another, now's the time to at least start that conversation. Having said all that, I don't have the answer to what I wanted to. Give me a few more minutes.
So I, I'm also thinking like, there's been lots of different conversations I've heard lately and, and kind of I feel like this whole process is in a new step of evolving, like we kind of built the capital process, right? And it's still evolving and growing. And, and we are with having a master project list now and, you know, having your department now, and now we have all this grant money flowing in, and we've had all this state money flowing in during COVID and all these other things, right? And so the list is just getting bigger, not smaller, even though we're checking stuff off. So to your, you know, kind of chicken and the egg question about, do we plan? So to your, you know, kind of chicken and the egg question about, do we plan the projects or the plan? You know, which comes first, what projects we want or how we plan them out? It's also capital, same thing, right? What's the most important to department head? That input of what projects within the department head scope is the ones they feel are priority versus not. That input, then is their funding, is their grant opportunities? I feel like we need to maybe, not now, but maybe in the next, you know, once kind of the annual funding process planning and all that is done for the ATM, has come back either, you know, last couple of months or after the first month or two of the new fiscal year and talk about like, what are the inputs and how do we organize that in a better way to inform this plan? Which informs the funding, which informs the department heads that they've informed what they need, right? And so all of it works together and I think that's the challenge, right? They're all pieces of the puzzle. And without one of them, then we make decisions in a vacuum a little bit, right? And we go back and go, oh, we didn't do that right. So I don't know how we incorporate all those inputs, but all those inputs are what's going to get this and the annual capital plan and the, you know, expectations for the department heads and what they're going to get and what we need from them for, for bandwidth, so.
Yeah.
Which is why this is not an easy question.
And I don't know, you know, there might be no answers to some of these tonight, but this is what, it's helpful for me to map this out in here. We definitely don't want to work on that right now. It's not a priority or yes, we need to do this sooner. So for example, the cemetery feasibility, I have that on here to do quarter four and quarter one of FY24. And I'm wondering if that's the right place to put that specific project. I would have, that would be procurement would be this quarter essentially. And we already have that RFQ drafted.
So say, isn't that already? Yeah.
It's good.
You need to launch it.
Right, refresh dates. So that's ready to go whenever we want, but yeah, when do we launch that?
I feel like in a couple of bites, like everything that's still in FY23 that isn't carrying over, is it really going to be done? And make, and kind of doing that sanity check right now? Is there anything spilling into 24 or not on that list? I can tell you the police department key list entry isn't even going to start until FY24. Because we haven't, I mean, maybe there'll be a little work in the Q4 of this fiscal year, but the body of work will probably be into FY24 somewhere.
Is that two quarters or one? Or more?
Probably two, for sure. It might be three, including procurement.
Quarter one, two and three?
It might be four, one and two, or one, two and three, yeah, something like that.
Okay.
Because we might be able to draft up procurement before, but it won't launch, so. But, but those kinds of things first, because what, what spills over into 24? And then what is 24 with all the capital projects that we just have anticipated putting in? Are they actually in there?
I think things that aren't purchases should already be in here. There's maybe a couple of the wastewater ones that weren't.
Sure, and I'm, I'm just saying like my thought process, right or wrong?
Right.
What spills over that isn't going to be done? What is the new additionals? And then, and then look at after FY24, is there anything we wanted to pull up into 24? And that will kind of define there's 24. And then can all the department heads feel like they have the bandwidth for the things that take high and, you know, their time, the stakeholders? And if all the answers to those are yes, we can fund them, everybody can manage them. They meet what we believe is the important things and they encompass the things that are still going that aren't going to be done. I think we have a good plan personally.
Well, and what about things like, and this is really tiny font, so if I'm missing it. Like the elementary school HVAC, I know there's a grant and it's grant funded and I'm, I don't know your level of involvement, or I would assume is it Glenn who would probably be involved in something like that? Like that's not here and in my mind, I'm going, we know there's problems. We heard tonight that they're now going to.
It's on the list. It just hasn't been moved up to the top for programming because you were waiting on it.
Oh, okay.
Is it on there somewhere? Oh, it's the third from the bottom on the second page. Do you have two pages over there? Yeah, see, it's on the back, back page.
But just like those kind of.
Oh, no, I didn't.
We know that they're going to have a grant, but we know that grant is going to lead to considerable amount of work. Just as an idea, when capital discussed it, that grant turned into new roof, new skylights.
Which is also one on there, yeah.
So.
Right, I don't know where those fit.
Right, right. And that kind of led to the conversation of, it makes sense to do those all together at once, just because of what the project is. But does it really make sense to put all that together into one project?
So the projects, as projects come up, that sound more than just a suggestion from a community member. And they sound like it has more promise of actually being something that gets a lot of support. It's at least made it on here as an honorable mention, but if it hasn't been programmed, it hasn't been funded. It hasn't been by the department that would be responsible for it or the board that oversees that said, this is a commitment for this fiscal year. Mariah hasn't given it a targeted funding in scheduling period. Because we didn't want to keep just adding things to the list and making this unattainable goal of trying to accomplish all of this because you're just adjusting these dates. So they do live here. But as new things come up, if some of these older ones really haven't gotten the support behind them, they continue to sit on the list. And so that is a project that we've heard about for quite some time now. And it hasn't had the traction yet and we're hoping this grant gives it the traction that it needs. But that is part of also, I think, the struggle or the complexity with this process.
Yeah, well, and I think, you know, as you can see, this is very front loaded. The farther out you get, the less is on there.
Right.
If we're, say, for example, town hall, we're, we're constructing that in FY27. And we're looking at a roof, an HVAC replacement for the school. Where does that land in relation to some of these very large projects? Because that's also going to be a very large project.
Right.
So it's like, if we're looking out four years, that's probably, that sounds likely to land within four years. But I don't know what part of those four years.
Well, I think you're, you know, the really high, right? The really large infrastructure projects, the really large building projects, that kind of stuff, you know? Fire ponds and culverts and roads and retaining walls and stuff like that, that are really large projects. I think all of those are probably, to me, the further out that we're really thinking about, we can only do how many of those in one fiscal year?
Exactly.
And to carry over how many fiscal years?
Right.
So we've got to stagger those massive ones. Because if I look at the, the right now Q3, maybe there's 20 and just roughly, probably 15 of those were anticipated, put in and started in less than 12 months.
Yeah.
They weren't on the five year out plan. They weren't even on the three year out plan.
Right.
They were on the, oh, there's an opportunity or a demand or a need or bandwidth or money, let's do it next year.
Yep.
And so those all fit in around the big ones.
Right.
And so I think to your point, right, programming the big ones at more of a five year out or so is probably a good target. I was just saying like, let's pull to FY24 just because we're there now. If we can spend the beginning of FY24 thinking about what is 25 before we're even budgeting it and going through those steps, that'd be better. But we're just not there right now in my mind.
So far.
I looked down at the list and I was just ignoring it because it wasn't even on there at the moment. But top coat and stormwater on Flag Hill. We just did all the sewer infrastructure. We just did the base of the road. If we leave that too long, we will have to waste money going and redoing what we already started. Because it's only got a couple of years. It's not even programmed. But it's not going to be probably more than FY25 that it has to be done. So those are the conversations, like that's going to get pulled up in the plan because it's important.
So that, but, so then to me, this would be a conversation where I would say to, and I don't know if that would be Mariah, Brian or Glenn, why wasn't there a capital request for this? Like that seems to me, hearing that and knowing that it needs to be completed, that sounds more urgent potentially than maybe something else we've received.
So.
Well, I don't know if that is or isn't than the ones we have. Because the retaining wall is more important. So that's Bridge Street. It doesn't make sense to do Bridge Street without Maple, so now that's the project that we've just doubled the cost on doing now. And the fire pond and culvert would be an important next one. So that means it's got to be after those in theory.
I guess to me, I question that and I go, you know, top coating and the stormwater on Flag Hill, is that more important than highway department truck? For 125? Like I, I guess those are the kind of conversations where I'm, I'm struggling with, with how, how we're prioritizing. And to me, this sounds like it's very important and now I'm looking at it going, well, we put a highway department truck on there. Is that truck absolutely necessary? Is it more, is that truck more important than this? Is that, you know, and that's something we talked about this year in capital is we struggle with knowing the priorities. And we rely on our department heads to inform us of those priorities. But this, you know, kind of shows me that maybe those priority, maybe there are other things that are, are more priority. And I think having, maybe we almost reversed the process, like you came in and talked to us about this a little bit further on down the road. So maybe we start next year with having Mariah bring this to us and we talk about this first. And then we kind of factor in some of the smaller things. I don't know, it's just an idea.
I think your point's good, but I think these, having this list gives us the opportunity to challenge that. You can ask that question. Without the list, we didn't know the question to ask. Now we at least know the question, or at least to ask if we don't know. Like if you look at that and you go, I don't know what you're doing on Flag Hill, what's that about? Well, it's this and what's there now has only got a couple of years. Oh, so where's that couple of years? Because now that sounds important, right? I'm hoping that helps us get there. And I, I think your point's right. On the other side, you could say, yes, it's more important than the truck, but I don't have the bandwidth to do Bridge Street and Flag Hill in the same year, so, so maybe it's not. You know, and those are the factors, right, so.
Right. The truck's not going to be tied to a project.
Right, right.
And it's, it's in theory below low intensity because it's a standard on the shelf. We've got to buy this. And we do it again every five years, you know, whatever, so.
So I, I was just going to say, I think piggybacking on what you had said, Jay, you know, looking at 24 and future years, 25 and 26, I think what you have is the core of the high intensity and placing those. And you did that when you said, you took a stance and said, I'm going to move town hall out. I cannot do X, Y and Z all in the same year. It's just too much. And I appreciate that input. And then allowing us to sort of dive into that a little bit and digest the plan and tweak it here and there as time goes on. And every quarter, looking at it saying, what's rolling over? You had talked about that, you know, what's rolling from 23 to 24? And does that change what I thought 24 was going to look like based on what we were unable to complete in 23? And looking at that as a rolling calendar. I appreciate the, the work you put into just giving us something to look at with future placement of projects. Because prior to that, we had, no disrespect, a handwritten, white, handwritten white dry erase marker with projects that just were instantly getting longer and longer and longer without any sort of substantive dates, timelines, funding sources. This is loops and bounds, gives us at least something tangible to look at and say,
Right.
you know, are we taking on too much? And what do we need to close out soon so we can have bandwidth for more?
Well, we also started the 25 year plan.
Yep, yep.
That fits in, you know, a lot of that stuff, yeah, it's, it's material like trucks, fire trucks or whatever, but it's also projects.
Yes.
You know, so that was a nightmare with the 25 year plan, trying to put everything on there and it's longer than this. You know, and then she comes up with this and.
Well, yeah, and I think the two of those need to sort of mirror each other.
Absolutely.
Because you're talking a lot of capital expenditures, both in projects and in, well, services and goods that are going to overlap.
Well, and we've been looking for the right solution to manage both and we don't, we definitely do not have the right tool. I don't know that any community has found the right tool yet. But I think the challenge with the capital plan is that, to Pete's point, you're trying to project out 10, 15, 20 years. You're trying to anticipate useful life of apparatus or other assets. Whereas some of these projects are projects with a useful life. Some of them are in the moment, a need that must be done and you won't see them again for 20, 50. A sewer line, in theory, we shouldn't talk about again for about 50 years in terms of a complete replacement, right? So it's, it's trying to find a system that deals with the year after year, long-term, five-year planning. But a capital plan, you want to be able to financially anticipate your needs a decade out, maybe even longer. And so there is a bit of a divergence between the two, but they do need to talk.
No, I mean, I think the capital plan at least can, if there's a, if there's a mandatory need on the capital plan for purchasing, that is going to soak up the capital funds. It may inform how many of these, whether you have the bandwidth or not.
Right.
Sorry, you have all the bandwidth in the world, we cannot fund it because we are buying X, Y and Z this year and we're going to have to push that out.
And that's a big concern of mine as I push town hall out. If we build a DPW building and two bridges in the next three years, how much money do we have left? That's not a Mariah question.
I'll wait for your answer.
Well, I, I counter that. How much money will Mariah get for these?
That's right, that's right.
I'm bringing this one up. I'm still waiting for the fire truck to hit us.
Right.
You know, now you're looking at three quarters to a mil.
Oh, those will be a million by the time that comes around.
We haven't hit that yet, but you get those big, those big expenditures coming down the pike and it's like, I took care of that one year. You know, so.
To Pete's point, we have been incredibly lucky that Chief Wonka, I forgot to ask him this year, I apologize, Chief Wonka. But we typically go to him and say, do you really need it? I believe we are about three or four years overdue with owing in that fire truck.
Yeah.
So, you know, we are very fortunate that we have department heads that truly look at what they've got and really make a determination if they need something to be replaced. This year, I think it was a lot better because we did do this and we did do our memo that we sent to Brian and Mariah. So it's the first year that they've been included. And that, I mean, they come to, I don't want to make it sound like they're not, but they come to the meetings. But it's the first time we have pointedly sent something to them and said, hey, could you both take a look at this and speak with any department heads and offer us feedback? And Mariah did give us some. And I think that it helps inform capital a little bit more. I love the spreadsheet. I would not be heartbroken if Mariah invented a 25 year plan.
I'll put it on my list of projects.
Is that going to be quarter four?
It's a low intensity.
One thought, and I'm not, I'm not saying you should change the whole thing or not, but just something to think about is maybe in the quarter blocks, using that for the intensity instead of having a separate grid.
Like different colors or?
No, just like low, medium, high by quarter because.
Oh, oh, I like that.
Because in the fourth quarter, the, the, what's the one I'm looking for? I don't know, whatever, some.
You're talking about just grouping them?
The treasurer, that's not going to help, huh?
You're talking about just grouping them?
No, no, I'm saying like.
Like as it changes.
The color you put down, high.
Yeah. Well, or we could do color.
I'm saying like, let's take, let's take the Bridge Street wall and reconstruction project, right?
Yeah.
In Q3 and Q4, it's actually low because we haven't started construction yet.
Right.
There's a little bit of overhead, the engineering firms doing all the work. We're just giving them feedback and answers and direction. And then we're going to break ground and, you know, and let's say in Q1, maybe it's Q4. That's going to be high. A lot of people involved.
So getting a little more nuanced.
And then the project closeout, when the road's closed, it's paved, the wall's up and everything else, and there's still all the finish work.
You're all going to have so much information by the end of this, you're not going to know what to do with it.
I know, and I'm not saying that.
No, but I like that idea a lot.
That eye chart that that's going to make is good or bad. And maybe color is better than words because of that, like a heat map, but.
Well, they also make the symbols where it's like a pie chart and you can have like one chunk, you know, two chunks. I'll see what I can do.
I'm just saying it might be a way because the high intensity project isn't high for the entire duration.
Well, you talked about that with, you know.
Church Street is not high right now because the engineering firm's doing it.
Right, Paper Mill Road, right now it's low, but there was a time when that was high.
Right.
And there was a lot of intensity on that, a lot of time.
Yeah.
So it just may skew how we feel about large projects. Because if the body of work is done.
Right.
Doesn't mean we can't be getting into the body of work of another large project that was low for a few months already or a quarter already.
So looking at FY24.
Accelerating our expenditures, but I'm just.
Looking at FY24, does that
Go too much longer on this tonight?
No.
Match what you're all thinking? The senior housing committee is going to be meeting on Thursday and I'm going to talk with them about releasing an RFP this summer to be due back early fall. And so that is an undertaking. But then most of FY24 is the cemetery feasibility study, updating the DPW feasibility study, culvert construction, IP mill demolition, if that happens. A feasibility study for the bike path, if I get a grant that you're going to review after this. The signage and branding project, I don't know where that fits in here. We have been trying to do that for a couple of years now and I just, it keeps getting bumped and I would love to see it done, but I also, the priority level, it's just, it's hard.
It should be, I mean relatively, it's important, but it should be low intensity because we can spread it out over time. I thought we were at the point of procuring, like trying to get a procurement for a vendor.
Who are?
Okay.
Yes.
We've just been at capacity with the existing
No, no, I'm not saying we're not at capacity, I'm just saying
We're ready to go.
We're ready. We just need to
We've drafted it, it's ready.
And release, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. And then it's hopefully a body of work for somebody else. It's low intensity for us. And when they come backwards, the body of work and it's high intensity for us.
Right.
If that just sits until we can get to it, then maybe that's what it is.
Yeah.
But if it's not ready, then we can't when we have time.
I think we're at a point with that one and the cemetery feasibility scope work that we drafted back in the fall. I think those have been ready to go. We were just trying to wrap up and as you can see, some are coming to completion. Where on the procurement office side, we are on the verge of doing several procurements for your multi-year contracts.
Right.
Your trash, your, um, your fuels and a few others. And we're working with our partners on those, working on an electrician multi-year bid. So, um, there's a little work gathering all that information and getting the procurements going. And once those things are sort of in motion, there's weeks that go by because you're waiting for the bid to, to close. Um, there's some questions to answer, but I think we have room to launch several things. The issue is you get it all back around the same time. And so we just want to make sure that we're not
Trying to stagger those.
Taking too much on when it all comes in and you all are going to have to review all of these bids and figure out all these different procurements, getting ready for the year. So we're just trying to space those out a little bit. Um, but I, I think we could do that soon and release it when you would actually want the work to happen. I think we need to look at this chart and then come back and say, when do you have time to work with a consultant and review their body of work?
Okay. I know we didn't answer a lot of that, but we are pretty late and I know there's more we have to do.
Yes.
I ask everyone at the table, we'll get the project list, if you see something that you think belongs in FY24 or 25 and it's not penciled in yet, please provide that feedback to Mariah and she can collate it, all of us. I think for some of us, you know, stuff that's in FY23 and we think that's going to spill over. Um, department heads, you know, should look at that too. Stuff that you, we're expecting you wrapping up, is it really or not? And then, uh, you know, for us, same thing, I see Swamp Road Bridge and not a critique, but that's going to take as long or as church, I'm sure, and it's only two quarters and that sounds exciting, but never.
Well, I think that's the construction. I think we have
We tried to break into phases.
Church Street Bridge construction is five quarters and Swamp is two. And I don't know which one's right or wrong, but they're not
I think Swamp Road Bridge might be more likely to drop a bridge in than, uh, than the Church Street Bridge, but yes, we'll see.
Okay. Maybe, I have no idea. Maybe you're right and I'm going to be excited, but anyway, just feedback on that. I think that's probably the best stage right now, just to do that. And then we're going to keep looking at this, we'll keep revisiting it.
Sounds good. Thank you all.
You know, validating everything on the capitals in there, everything that's planned that makes, you know, that's big is in there. Good?
Good.
Good.
Okay. Um, I don't know if you want to go anywhere.
Oh.
Might as well, we got you here, might as well.
I just want to jump through and make sure, have we covered everything for the joint meeting?
I believe so.
It looks like we have. Anything that you all have for us? No, okay. Finance will see you in two weeks. Capital, thank you. We will let you know if we need to come back and revisit. Otherwise, we'll probably call you back around the finalizing of the ATM.
Isn't it 27th we're going to meet?
Ooh, scheduled for that.
I don't know off the top of my head.
27th?
Yeah, no, it was.
27th of February, I guess we are, we're supposed to meet back with you.
Yeah.
Hold on. You're right. I don't know why, but you're right because I'm looking at my calendar.
Did we do that to finalize the ATM?
Uh, not soon, maybe. So, okay, maybe on the 27th.
It may, it may
It may get rescheduled.
It may have been to that question that Peter raised around if a change had to be made after they presented the request.
Available funds, yeah.
And having a revisit on that topic, that may have been the reason we put a placeholder there.
Yep. So we'll see you either for that or to finalize the ATM. And if it's not the 27th, we'll let you know, we'll schedule something different. So I'm going to make a motion to adjourn the joint meeting with capital and finance and continue the board meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Ah, sounded unanimous. I wish I was with that.
Asking here.
Yes, sir.
On your agenda, so I can tell my wife when I get home that she's been accepted into the historical commission.
So before you go, if Mariah is willing to give us a moment, uh, we will jump to review of letters of interest and appointments to the historical commission, Betty LaMallette and Teresa Dodge.
Senior packet, you should have a memo from me recommending appointments and, uh, supporting letters of interest.
Saw them both. I see no, no issues with either one, concerns?
No.
No concern?
Oh, go ahead.
Nope.
Uh, I make a motion to appoint Betty LaMallette as a member of the historical commission with a term ending June 30th, 2025.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I make a motion to appoint Teresa Dodge as a member of the historical commission with a term ending June 30th, 2025.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
We'll get notices out as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tell her we said thank you.
I was just shocked that she goes for it.
Absolutely.
It's great. Thank you. Just want to run through the agenda real quick and see what we, where we're at and what we have to leave on here um, for tonight, given the, the time. Town Hall feasibility is being passed over. Doesn't mean we won't come back to review what we have for work and get it incorporated before we table it for, for a while. Remote work policy will pass over. And the rest will be relatively quick, I think, and we will head them out. So next is review of Mass Trails Grant application.
So I am applying for a Mass Trails grant and I need to pull up my application. There's a lot of documents for both grants that I'm about to present. Um, so it's, uh, quite a bit, but there, I have, um, well, one second. The grant information that I attached, the actual grant portal, I, I don't turn in this PDF. I actually have to go in and type all of this in. So the formatting is a little bit wonky, but, um, I'm asking for almost $36,000 from this grant. And the capital, uh, planning committee saw a request from me for our match funds, um, which was 8,000, I think. And so this would be for a feasibility study to explore a bike path on the south side of the Millers River that would go from essentially Bridge Street to Riverfront Park, Arch Street, and then potentially to Sears Road in Wendell Depot. Um, and I have eight letters of support so far and I'm asking for yours.
I'm all for it. I think, given the, um, the interest in movement with Mass DOT and the Route 2 corridor, I think this makes sense. As I think, we've talked a lot about, uh, you know, pedestrian and bike access through Route 2 from, you know, all the way from this side of town to Irving Center. And sometimes it's just not feasible. So to have this bike path on the other side that basically can connect, you know, part of it anyways, I think it's, it makes sense.
Yeah, I mean, we were in favor of having you start this exploration, so I don't think anything so far has changed that for me either. I'm interested to see what could be in of it.
I as well.
And just, this is not a guarantee of anything, but we're in a design phase with Mastah on the Route 2 improvements and we've been in early conversations with them and they have shown a lot of interest in this concept.
Yeah.
Um, as part of their complete streets requirements, they have to, every project, look at whether or not they can include bike and ped. And they will go through that analysis for Route 2, but they're acknowledging there's some significant challenges with being able to accomplish that. And so this may prove to be an advantageous alternative, depending on how this feasibility turns out.
Do they like it enough to give us the $20,000?
They're not there yet.
Okay, all right, I wasn't sure. I figured I'd ask, you know.
But they are intrigued.
I'm trying to figure out where the bike path is going to go after Old State Road on Route 2, but that's a whole nother one.
Yeah. I had posed that question. We don't want them to forget that that has happened.
It just stops.
It just stops.
It just stops.
And if you, and if you dare the bypass, then what? Because now you're in Farley and you're along the river and
We have not allowed them to forget that that is a big open question for us.
I talk about bikes a lot.
It, it was so intriguing that they had the new bike lane that's just going to dead end.
I mean, they, I understand, they have to put it in and I think it's a great thing. And I think that it also forces them to figure out where it goes in the future and I'm really happy about that. I think it does look ridiculous right now, but I, as a planner, I totally, I understand and appreciate that they put that in there. I also want to make it very clear, especially to anyone watching at home, this feasibility study does not mean that there will be a bike path.
Right.
This feasibility study explores, if there could be a bike path, uh, where it would go. Are people interested in Irving and Wendell and beyond in having this path? What would they want to use it for? Could it be accessible? What are the grades and slopes? Like all of these questions. Um, I've had a couple of people come to me asking about this, thinking like, oh, this grant is to put in a bike path. And I was like, absolutely not. We are so far from that. Um, and I have had a lot of interest from the Wendell Open Space Committee. Their chair has been very kind and we've had several conversations and they are just finishing up their open space and recreation plan. Um, and so they've been doing all the surveys associated with that and people in Wendell have expressed a lot of interest in having more walking and bike paths in Wendell. So I do think that this, um, it comes together quite nicely.
The motion to support the letter, I would assume?
Yeah.
To sign the letter of support.
There's a draft in your pocket.
Yes, I said, I believe we would need to make a motion to, that's what I said, sorry. I need to speak up, but I'm getting tired.
Yeah, I think we are.
Where am I?
Actually, I think it's two motions. It's one to that, but it's two authorization to Mariah to apply for the, the grant as well.
Yeah, to submit the application.
We'll do it the other way around. I'll make the motion to to sign the letter of support for the, um, Mass Trails Grant application for the feasibility study of the shared use path.
Second, thank you for that.
No problem. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then I'll make a motion that we approve the submission of the 2023 Mass Trails Grants Program grant application for feasibility study for shared use path.
Second.
Shared use path feasibility, let me just add that in one more time. It's not like we're making the path.
Thank you.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I think that was
That's that for that and then
That's that for that. Are you doing the, the other one too, right? The historical commission? Okay.
Um, which also I realized, Brian, did you get a chance to ask capital planning about that request that was missing?
No, I did not, but we need to have a conversation about that. So if you ever recall when historical brought this project to you, God, beginning of December? End of November, somewhere in that timeframe, and asked you if it would be okay to submit a letter of interest, that was step one. Um, there was a conversation about what the scope of the project would be, how large financially that project would be and what the 50% match would look like. And so at the time, the historical commission discussed with you um, seeking a $40,000 project, which would mean that the town would have to be working towards an allocation of $20,000. And so it happened after the capital planning committee process was well underway. And today, as you saw from the plan, it hasn't made its way into a capital plan. We were also trying to understand at that moment, from a town perspective, are we starting to work all of these plans into the capital project plan? Our, I think when we wrote our definition, we were not necessarily anticipating plans. I think we were anticipating construction or equipment or things of that nature. Our definition is $5,000 in five years of useful life. I think a plan could be considered five years or more of useful life. So we hadn't anticipated the conversation, but I think one example is the planning board did submit a request testing this question and they said, we want to update our subdivision reg. Is that a capital plan? And capital did screen it in as a plan. So I think that is something that we need to identify. But to the, the immediate question that Mariah's posing, if we submit this application, it is contingent upon, uh, the town also allocating 50%. So, um, we just have a question mark, is that a capital planning request or is that more of a operating budget request? And the reality is, we've never had clear distinction on or clear guidance on what that is. This is the year that we have imposed with this question.
Which I just want to clarify for anyone watching at home, this is about a structural, historic structural inventory. So it would be looking at, um, structures across town, uh, that are, I believe, later than 1950. Um, and just doing an assessment and inventory of those. And the total request or the total project cost would be $40,000. We're asking for a $20,000 grant and then the capital request that may or may not exist is $20,000.
So this is a match?
Right, so I, yes. So we're requesting a match for, um, $20,000 grant. And I guess I'm asking you for approval for the grant, but the question mark that I had was whether the match exists or not.
It doesn't exist yet.
Well, and to be very, while we're clarifying for everybody, because this conversation was a few months ago, it does not have to be available until January or July 1st. So the fact that we're discussing it during the planning of our budget, FY24 budget, is what's important. The commitment is that we are, we are working towards an appropriation. They all know the town meeting has not happened yet. They know that no appropriation has been made. So it does not have to exist at this moment.
Yeah, I guess I was answering that more from the, it's not on the capital plan, so if we consider a capital, it's not there. It's not an operating budget. It's not anywhere, even if it will get approved. It isn't anywhere right now.
We have not added it into the budget draft yet.
Correct, right.
And I guess your, your question is, does something like this fall under the parameters of capital or does it fall under operating?
Don't feel like operating to me. Part of it, when you first said about plan, I will say, when you said, you know, what's the useful life of the plan? Or is it a plan that will likely inform further costs? Then I absolutely think that needs to be a capital decision because if we do this, then the expectations, there's going to be more requests behind it because of it. I'm not saying this one, but a plan in general.
Right.
Right? You do an assessment and a plan of what you, an assessment of culverts. That's under the assumption that now we're going to go spend money on culverts. So it, it, it's a plan that lends to more capital needs. So it kind of feels like it should fall under it because if they don't think we can fund those, why are we bothering? To spend the money now, right?
I think this is part of the evolution that you all were talking about earlier. We weren't having
I wasn't ready for any more evolutionary conversations at 9:54.
I was going to say at 9:55, it's a great time.
Solve the problem today.
When do you need an answer? And capital left, so this is like
The grant is due February 6th, so next Monday.
And this is the other problem. I think grants, they're great, but they're happening and they're due with no time for us to have them as part of planned and cycled discussions, right? At least so far. Maybe we can incorporate them more. And you brought a list last time, which I think was great, but
So I think there's two things at play. One is a simple question is, do we think we can fold in a $20,000 appropriation into FY24? And do we want to, you know, authorize, uh, planning department and Mariah to move forward with that? And that, that grant application, going forward, do we think that something like this ideally would go through a certain process like capital and, and take on that role because there might be, you know, what are the parameters? The, you know, this one's a survey of, uh, you know, historic structure. I don't know if that's going to call out future, you know, upkeep. It's just an inventory. It's just an inventory and, and
It's informational.
It's informational only. So this one really doesn't, you know, it's a little different than the culverts, which you do that with the anticipation, we're going to fix them all.
I think the added, uh, complexity to this particular topic, so it doesn't perfectly align with any of our existing procedures is that the grant schedule, when the information, the opportunities are released, the deadlines to submit, whatever those procedures look like, and who is the, uh, eligible authority to apply for any of these funds, all happen throughout the year at, sometimes they're well-known in advance, but other times you find out a month, you have a month's notice to do something, right? And so it's not going to nicely follow our existing budgeting processes. This one came up in October after the submissions had already been received with the capital planning committee. So I think we need to identify the right process and I don't know if it, it perfectly aligns with anything that we currently have in place.
So we talked about establishing a grant fund.
I was just going to, that's the point I was just going to make.
Where did that go?
Yeah.
Because we talked about it and we talked about putting it as a line item and we talked about potentially who might release those funds.
So what I was just Was FinCom, so
Right.
So what I was going to suggest is for
Was that in my operating budget? No?
That's what I was going to suggest. You and I talked about, do we bring it up again?
It should be a special appropriation so we don't have to refund it every year if we didn't expend it. So it wouldn't be our operating budget.
Right.
So, but what is that? Is that 30? Is it 50? Is it only 20? And if it's 50, maybe we apply and we decide if we want to. I don't know. It's, that's the problem. I hate to apply for grants and get them to potentially refuse them. And I think we have a habit of starting from a, well, we applied, we weren't really expecting it. Now we got it, now we have to do it, which isn't true. But it's really hard to say no to free money.
Right.
So all right. In the essence of time, do we want to advocate for spending 20 grand to match to do this?
I'm going to say yes, because, because that, that committee has, has worked hard to, to put together a full committee to finally do the work that they, that, that they envisioned being done by the Historical Commission. And for the first time, we're going to have a full, a full body of people to work on that. And I think it's just maybe a consultation to, to, to help them along the way. And then we work out the parameters of how this is going to function in the future. But that's how I envision it at this point in time.
I assume this is, the Historical Committee wanted this. Commission wanted this, right?
They did. They asked me to help them with this, yes.
Okay, okay. Like the current active membership is interested.
Yes.
And advocating, okay, that's all. I mean, I'm okay with it. If we find the budget doesn't have the capacity, then we can do, adjust, but I, it's pretty small. In the scope of what we're, what we're doing.
Yes.
And funding. Is that, is there a motion in there somewhere?
Set a motion to
Authorization to apply for the grant.
Motion to authorize Mariah Currie to apply for the Town of Irving Historic Structures Survey Grant. Is that the correct terminology? Does that capture it?
Yes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I just approved it. I was going to ask, do you need the matching or?
It's in the grant documents.
Yep.
Thank you.
So just one last thing on that. I think when we're finalizing FY '24, maybe we try and answer that question of creating that fund account where we can line item, you know, some seed money for matching grants that we know it's there and we don't have to worry about it. And the only thing we would have to do annually is replenish as needed.
Right.
That would be wonderful. I do have to send out this application via mail. So the signatures that I need, if I could get those in the next day or two, I don't think I can sign them. I think
I don't see the signatory page on here. Yes, oh, it's me. You want to make a motion to authorize? Chairman Smith?
You want to sign them tomorrow?
Or tonight, I could print them out.
Yeah.
Make a motion to authorize Chairman Smith as the signatory for the grant.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Wonderful, thank you.
We'll make it happen.
You want to cover it?
Yeah. I just need to get them signed so I can send them out.
Yeah, no problem. If you print them, I'll sign them.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Is that it?
That's it.
Okay, thank you.
Reorganization of the Insurance Advisory Committee.
Should be a memo in the back of the recommendation?
Any concerns with the recommendation of the Insurance Advisory Committee?
No, I'm fully aware of it.
Yeah, I have no concerns. I just, I was just wondering though, how much time does, will this disposition encompass for people?
Shouldn't take long. I'll be honest with you, ours hasn't met, which is part of the problem. And so when things do arise, you don't have active people already participating. The reality is you, you really only call the meeting if you're planning, plan changes to the insurance. And, and it's so rare that we ever do, that we haven't had this, this body meet. We are, I think we should get them meeting and maybe just find some way to keep them engaged so that we have this group ready to go at any given moment if we needed them. But we are specifically wanting to work with them because you all have been talking with Jennifer around changes to dental, improving our offering, not trying to take anything away, certainly. And now we've just learned from the Insurance Advisory or from the Hampshire Trust, which is our health insurance provider, that they are also looking at changing dental. So you all were prepared to maybe go to, on our own and they also are prepared to do it. So either way, whether we go it on our own or whether we stay with the trust for dental, we have to go through this process. So we're probably talking a few meetings and then periods of no meeting. So it's, it's not a huge commitment.
Now we need to reestablish it, establish it.
So you all voted to establish it in 2019.
Yeah.
And they didn't have a lot of work to do after that, so it hasn't gone anywhere. And at that time, we did not have a bargaining unit for the police department.
Got it.
So we are reconstituting it, acknowledging that we now have a bargaining unit for the police department. So that's the new membership structure.
I'll make a motion that will reconstitute the Insurance Advisory Committee as per the recommendation, which is eight members, three from Irving Teachers Association, Association Union A, two from Irving Education Association Unit B, two from NEPBA Local, Irving Local 121 and one retiree position appointed by the select board. That is the
Second.
Short version of the written definition. Second. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
When do you need the appointed retiree position? Do you need to advertise for that? Do you want, do you want to?
We're going to reach out to retirees and bring forward a recommendation to the three of you. And in the meantime, I'm going to reach out to the bargaining units and let them know that I need them to appoint or elect or however they're choosing to identify their, their representatives by a certain date so that we can call a meeting. So we will start that process.
Good.
Yep. Thank you.
Special municipal employee designation for the Franklin County Solid Waste District Representative in alternate positions. Make a motion to move the select board designate the position of Franklin County Solid Waste Management District Representative as a special municipal employee position for the town pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 268A, Section 1N.
Second.
Any discussion or concerns?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Make a motion, select board designate the position of the Franklin County Solid Waste Management District Alternate Representative as a special municipal employee position for the town pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 268A, Section 1N.
Second.
All those in favor?
All right.
Aye.
This doesn't require us to re-appoint people to those positions, just a designation change. It's just a designation change. I'm currently your only representative. If anybody would like to join me.
Swift little plug there.
Yeah. But this is more for a conflict that came up in another town and the district's trying to, to address that. But all 26 towns have to adopt this language.
Right.
So it's not an issue for us at this moment, but we're trying to help our friends out.
Okay, for tonight, last but not least, review and appropriate the fiscal year 20, FF1?
Federal fiscal.
Thank you. I was like, I know that other graph matters, so you wouldn't have put it in there and I can't remember what it was. Review and approve the federal fiscal year 21 CDBG budget amendment.